Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, December the ninth. Pleased to have everybody here. Before we get started, just a couple of quick reminders, if you would. Please turn your cellphones off to silent, just so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. If you want to be heard on an item today, and you haven't already, these little white sheets of paper are out on the front table. Please feel free to fill one out, hand it to our friendly staff team here, and they will make sure that I get them at the appropriate time. I'll be sure and call on you, give you a chance to come up, tell us anything you want to know about the meeting today. On that line, when you come up to the microphone, please remember to start by giving us your name and address for the record. And then you've got five minutes to tell us something that we need to hear, you think we need to know. I would ask that if somebody before you has already spoken on an issue, we don't need to hear the same thing twice, so if that's the case, I'll probably cut you off, just because it's redundant, but we certainly want to make sure any comments we need to hear, we get heard. So with that, we'll get started. Our first order of business is to receive the minutes of the November eighteenth, 2021 meeting. And if there's no discussion from commissioners on those minutes, I'd take a motion to receive them.
So move.
I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes.
Aye.
All votes should be cast, including Commissioner Powers, who's voted aye. And those minutes are received. Next item on the agenda, our continuance requests. I believe we have a number of those. Mr. Butler?
Yes, item twenty-five, Case C-7388, defer to January thirteenth. Item forty, Case PC-10753, defer to January twenty-seventh. Item forty-one, Case P-10783, defer to January twenty-seventh. Forty-two, Case PC-10767, defer indefinitely. And item forty-three, Case PC-10768, has been withdrawn.
Is there anybody that was with us today that wanted to be heard on one of those items? Seeing none, if there's no discussion on those from commissioners, I'll take a motion on the continuance as is read.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the uncontested continuance as is read.
Okay. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers has voted aye. All votes should be cast. And those continuances are approved as read. We have one additional request. It was a new request as of today, I understand, Mr. Butler?
Yes, this is Case number twenty-two, S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty-one. The request is defer to January thirteenth.
Is there anybody that want to be heard on that item today? Again, just for clarity, since it was one today, S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty-one, it's item number twenty-two on today's agenda. Okay. If there's nobody, I'll take a motion on that continuance.
Move approval of the new continuance as read.
Have a motion to approve that continuance to January thirteenth. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers has voted aye. All votes should be cast. And that item is, that continues as approved as well. Next item on our agenda is our consent docket. These are items administrative in nature. We have ten of those, or believed to be administrative in nature. We have ten of those, I believe, Mr. Butler?
Yes, Case one. Case one is PC-10780, application to rezone fifteen twelve and fifteen eighteen, Southeast Fifteenth Street, from C three with AE two overlay zone to I two with, also with AE two overlay zone. The second item is Case PC-10784, application to rezone seventeen thirty, Southeast Grand Boulevard, from R one and I two to I two. Third item is Case C-7371, a final plat of Dearbrook, Section five, located south of Northwest One Fiftieth Street and east of North Rockwell Avenue. The fourth item is Case C-7373, final plat of The Pearl at Mesa Park, located west of North Ollie Avenue and south of Northwest Twenty-second Street. Item five is Case seventy-three seventy-six, final plat of Cordillera, I think, Ranch Replat, and that is located north of the Turner Turnpike and east of North Douglas Boulevard. Item six is Case C-7381, final plat of Vaquero Reno Edition, located north of West Reno Avenue and west of Southwestern Avenue. Item seven, Case C-7382, final plat of Britton Farms, Section three, located south of West Britton Road and west of North County Line Road. Item eight, Case C-7383, final plat of Hefner Crossing, Phase one, located south of East Hefner Road and west of North Kelly Avenue. Item nine, Case C-7385, final plat of Montage, Section three, located north of Southwest Forty-fourth Street and west of North Mustang Road. Finally, item ten, Case C-7386, final plat of Savannah Estates, Phase four, located north of West, north of Memorial Road and west of North County Line Road.
Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on one of those items today? Seeing nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners on any of those consent items, I'll take a motion on the agenda as a whole.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as read.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. All votes cast?
Oh, sorry.
That's right. And those items are approved. Next item would be on our agenda is items requiring separate vote. Starts with item number eleven today, Mr. Butler?
This is S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty, application to rezone fifteen two hundred Crown at Lone Oak Road, from P.U.D. seven oh six to S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty.
Good afternoon, David Box. Five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is also here with us. This is a rezoning effort to allow for a pet motel. The use is allowed now, but it limits it to indoor activity. This would allow for outdoor activity. It's worth noting that it's on the east side of the street. There is no residential that exists at the moment along our eastern boundary. This is an area, obviously, that's been growing quite rapidly in the last decade, and this use, we believe, to be something that is compatible with the area, as well as comprehensive plan, and there are no technical evaluations.
This is a ward eight case, which is my ward, so I looked at this case. I don't have any concerns. It's on the east side of Crown at Lone Oak Road, so it doesn't abut the neighborhood that's immediately to the west. And it's an interior commercial lot, which is also a bit strange, just because it doesn't affront Northwest One Hundred and Fifty. I have no concerns on it. I don't know if other commissioners do. It's a pretty straightforward application, so if there's no further discussion, I'd certainly entertain a motion to recommend approval to City Council on the S.P.U.D. I don't, have anybody sign up to speak? Is there anybody that wants to be heard on S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty today? I didn't think so. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty to City Council.
I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S.P.U.D. thirteen sixty. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Next item is item twelve?
This is P.U.D. eighteen sixty-six, application to rezone thirteen fifteen South MacArthur Boulevard, from P.U.D. ten twenty to P.U.D. eighteen sixty-six.
Once again, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. This is a P.U.D. application that would take a non-developed piece of property along South MacArthur and essentially split it into two. Cindy, could you just play? There we go. The west half would be multifamily, which would be consistent with the multifamily that exists to the west of the subject. The eastern half would be a future retail development along the arterial. There was one technical evaluation, and we do agree to it. I'm not aware of any protest. We'd ask for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward, ma'am. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant?
No, I've discussed this with Mr. Box. The applicant's representative, pretty straightforward application. I don't, do not have any further questions.
Okay. I'll just make sure, is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on P.U.D. eighteen sixty-six today? I don't see anybody. Is there any discussion from commissioners on this item? If none, I think we're ready for a motion, Commissioner Coffey.
I recommend approval to City Council of P.U.D. eighteen sixty-six.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on P.U.D. eighteen sixty-six. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Next item on our agenda today is item thirteen.
This is P.U.D. eighteen sixty-eight, application to rezone seventy-nine oh one South Peabody Road, from AA to P.U.D. eighteen sixty-eight.
Once again, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, which is on cue. I do have the entirety of the on cue team here, if there are any questions, but this is, Cindy, could you go to the aerial? This is a location along I forty and Peabody that has been used as a batch plant for quite some time, while Interstate forty through this stretch has been under construction for what feels like the better part of a decade. Perhaps it's been shorter. It's worth noting, there are multiple truck stops to the west, so it's not uncommon that you might expect to find a truck stop at a full interchange along Interstate Highway. We think this to be a good spot. We've gone with a commercial highway base, which we think to be appropriate at this location. The site plan is what you have come to expect from on cue, quality operator, attractive facilities. There is one unique feature about this, in that there are current signed moratoriums that exist in Oklahoma City. We have to go get a variance to the moratorium to be able to move forward with certain size requirements, so Mr. Privet will get the good fortune of being able to hear this case not only this Thursday, but next Thursday as well, at a special meeting of the Oklahoma City Board of Adjustment. So we do agree to the TE, which means we have to go get that variance from the Board of Adjustment, so I'll beg Mr. Privet for his vote next Thursday as well.
Fair enough. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward, sir. Questions on this?
Do you have to come back here again?
No, we don't have to come back here again. It'll just go City Council.
All right, cool. I have no issues with this. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
I do not have anybody sign up to speak, but I will certainly ask to be sure. P.U.D. eighteen sixty-eight, is there anybody who wanted to be heard today on that item? I look that way.
Okay, I'll move approval.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on P.U.D. eighteen sixty-eight. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item fourteen.
This is S.P.U.D. thirteen forty, application to rezone eighty-eight twenty South Pennsylvania Avenue, from C three to S.P.U.D. thirteen forty.
Once again, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, behalf of the applicant. This, this item is a similar project to what you've seen, multiple spots, multiple infill spots around Oklahoma City. The most recent one was done in the Gatewood neighborhood. Cindy, if you could go to the aerial, please. What you'll see with this aerial is that you've got this bit of land that's kind of lost between the commercial frontage along Pennsylvania and pre-existing single-family. So it's not likely to be office or retail, because of course, there's no frontage on a arterial. It's not likely that you could get single-family homes in there enough to justify the cost of the dirt. So a multifamily project, similar to what Mr. Gresham has designed in other parts of the city, we think to be a perfect fit in here. These are geared towards seniors. They are single-story developments, and if you've seen the one in Gatewood, they tend to really fit in well with the neighborhood. So there is one TE that we agree to. There's no protest. There was an early citizen that was concerned, that we were able to go meet with, both Mr. Gresham and the developer, and I believe have eased his concerns. I have not heard from him again. Mr. Hinkle, I don't know if you have or not, but I am of the belief that he is good now.
Seems like a good segue. Commissioner Hinkle, this is your ward, sir. Questions or comments for the applicant?
I spoke to the person who was concerned last night, and he's no longer concerned. I think this is a neat project, going to fit in well, so unless there's other conversation, I'm ready to make a motion.
Looks like some good property tax money for schools, to me. Any discussion from commissioners on this one? All right. If there's anybody signed up to speak, there's not anybody that's signed up to speak, I should say, so I'll ask. S.P.U.D. thirteen forty, anybody want to be heard on that item today? Great. Let's fund some schools. I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval to City Council for S.P.U.D. thirteen forty with one TE.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S.P.U.D. thirteen forty. I'll take the second on Prime Gov, when that's available. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Commissioner Hinkle?
Oh, sorry.
You got a vote on yours, man. And that item is recommended for approval. Next item on our agenda today is item fifteen. Mr. Butler?
This is P.U.D. eighteen sixty-one, application to rezone thirty-three hundred South Mustang Road, from P.U.D. thirteen fifty to P.U.D. eighteen sixty-one.
Once again, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. This is an application for a P.U.D. that would allow for a multifamily development in land that is similarly situated to the last item, in that it's kind of behind what will be commercial. It's zoned commercial now through a P.U.D. That would be an extraordinarily deep amount of commercial development along Mustang. So if this is approved, we would be surrounded on the west and the north by commercial and office development, and then to the east, we do have single-family. The technical evaluation asks us to specify our density, so we can agree to no more than one hundred and fifty units. What that puts the density at is approximately twenty or twenty-one units per acre, which is a significant reduction from what would otherwise be allowed under traditional R4 zoning, which of course, is thirty-four units an acre. So we've reduced that density down by almost fourteen units per acre. The site plan you see before you is what will be built. I've handed out some exhibits that walk through. This concept is not like a typical garden-style apartment. These are more similar to what is called the big house or the mansion house apartment complexes. So if the site plan, we have a seventy-five-foot setback from the east. Within that setback, there is a ten-foot landscape buffer that will be filled with trees, and then a twenty-foot landscape buffer that'll exist on the north. It is worth noting that we take all of our access off of Mustang Road, which is a state highway. This is an area that has seen phenomenal growth in both single-family and commercial development, in large part due to the Turnpike. That's come through there recently. So we believe this to be a compatible development with, not only the area, but the neighborhood that exists in close proximity to it. So there, there is, again, the one TE. We would ask that the unit count be no more than one hundred and fifty dwelling units within this P.U.D., and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward, ma'am. Do you have questions for the applicant on this?
Those that I have have been answered by Mr. Box. I've not been contacted by any individuals. I did receive a copy of an email from an individual that was sent to Councilman Young. Is, is there anyone that signed up to speak on this?
I do have one person who has signed up.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from them?
I'd like to hear from that individual.
Okay. Just one question of clarification, real quick. Mr. Box, you, you said on the east, our setback there that you're putting in to the MDS is seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five feet building setback. And within the seventy-five feet?
So the, the parking lot that's shown there on the top of the drawing would actually be the east side?
Correct.
So how far are those dumpsters from the property line?
Ten feet.
Okay. I'm assuming we can move those?
I will send an email right now and find out.
And then the, you could go back to that image, real quick, Cindy. So that drawing above, so the parking lot, the edge of the parking lot is roughly twenty-five feet, you said? Ten feet? That's the ten-foot buffer there?
So the top of the screen is really east and the out, so it's a ten-foot buffer along the entirety, twenty foot on the north.
Okay. And your screening on that side is what?
Our screening will be whatever the code requires, so we'll have a, you know, site-proof fence. My belief is that there will be site-proof fences there regardless with the single-family homes that are platted up next to it.
Got it. Okay. That's great. Let's hear from our person who's joined us to speak on this, Ashley Barrett. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ashley Barrett. I live at one-one-one-two-four Southwest Thirty-first Street, and one of the exhibits, you can actually see my home, I believe, it's the one prior to this, the one that you can see the overview of the city, you know, just the dirt and everything.
How about, how about from there?
Yes, I live off of Thirty-first Street. I am one in from Needle Drive, right there. I am representing my neighborhood. Unfortunately, most of my neighbors are dual-income households, and they were unable to get off work to be able to join me today. However, we did put around a petition when we heard about this. Unfortunately, because most of those homes that will be budding up right against there have not been built, we did not know about this until someone, I believe, on Southwest Thirty-third Terrace told us about this project, and we began a petition. We were not aware that we needed to submit this beforehand, so I very much apologize if you needed to see this before. We have two hundred sixty-three signatures. I took a screenshot of this on change.org, so you can see this. There's a page with all of the comments. I want to note on here that there are some funny zip codes in here. As of note, even myself and my husbands, Spencer Barrett and Ashley Barrett, ours shows as seven-three-one-seven-nine. Change.org does not tell you that you need to update your address, and apparently, it's kind of a pain to do so. So we've actually lived in our homes since October twenty-seventeen. We were one of the first families that built in this neighborhood. There were a couple of homes that were built as spec homes, but we were one of the very first families to break ground on our own home that we wanted to build. We came to this neighborhood specifically because it was a very, very quiet area. We were very excited that it would hopefully remain a quiet area, and that we would have, you know, decent-sized lots, so we have a little elbow room between each of our neighbors. And that, that was a big draw. We want, we have ended up in a home situation prior, that we ended up losing a lot of money, and we ended up having to short-sell that home. So we were very cautious when we got into this. And we have some specific concerns about a multifamily dwelling going in right here. One of our biggest concerns is the infrastructure that has not been built up properly by OGN E. We have had multiple times that we have had flickering lights, so much so, that about three years ago, I had OGN E out in my home. We had an electrician out in my home to see if there was a problem, because it was constant. Every time one of the neighbor's air conditioning units turned on, our lights would dim, and we have LED lights. That should never happen. The OGN E worker actually told me that they did not have the infrastructure built up in preparation for all of these homes. As you can see, there's been massive growth. This was just a big sod farm several years ago, and the homes started being built about four to five years ago now. Along with these power surges, we actually had one that was so significant, we lost our dishwasher this year. And so we ended up having to pay for an electrician to come out and install a whole, whole-home surge protector on our home. Our big concern is that if we have such a dense dwelling come into this area, that we're going to experience even more power surges, and we're going to lose more of our appliances, not to mention the fact, now many of my neighbors work from home, and they're, they need to have access to power and internet so that they can continue working to be able to pay for those homes, so we don't lose them. We're also concerned about the impact of the traffic in the area. Mustang Road is a very, 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 very busy road. I'm sure that you are aware of that. I was actually in a car accident where I was injured on it, when I was trying to turn left to get into somewhere on Mustang Road. My big concern is there is another apartment dwelling on, it's right between Fifteenth and Southwest Twenty-ninth on Mustang Road. There's a lot of people that turn left, so they're going north. It would be the same kind of situation. We get traffic that's backed up. There's been lots of car accidents. I've witnessed several of them. witnessed several of them. People don't pay attention. We all know this. People don't put down their cell phones and keep texting while they drive, unfortunately, and there's not much we can do about that. But I have a huge concern with my children. I'm a homeschooling mother of three children. I'm concerned about the increase in traffic in this area that this would be bringing in. I mean, I'm concerned, too, there's a road that butts up against this, which means that more than likely, people will be using our roads as walkways. And we also have a traction that's a splash pad that's only supposed to be for our HOA.
60 seconds, Ms. Barrett.
We're concerned about the heavier volume of people in this. We're also concerned about the possibility of this decreasing the value of our homes, having a multifamily dwelling right next to our neighborhood. In... The last thing I want to mention is there is currently this sign that is up in that... On that area, and Caleb Hill is the developer. And one of my neighbors, Gail, spoke with Caleb, and he said it would be about one and a half years until developing. He believed there would be a small grocery store here. He never said anything about selling off any of this property. Apparently, he already did. When she called back a week ago, he said he had already sold this piece off, and that was a huge disappointment to our neighbors because we would love to see commercial development go in there, especially if there is an outflow into Southwest 29th to help with traffic flow.
Got it. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down, both for you and your neighbors who couldn't make it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much, of course. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item today? I didn't have anybody else signed up. Okay. Mr. Box, you want to take 60 seconds and address those concerns, including 263 petitions, signatures?
So I have not seen that. So that's news for me. I would say Mustang Road, Cindy, if you go to the aerial, is four-lane. Southwest 29th and Mustang is a fully-developed, signalized intersection with turn lanes in it. So Mustang Road's a state highway. It is fully-developed with four lanes with multiple areas that have turn lanes up and down Mustang Road. To your question, Mr. Chair, on the dumpsters, we can add a TE that requires the dumpsters to be 50 foot off the eastern property line, which would get it away from the single-family residential. I don't know about the electricity, other than OG&E, like a lot of infrastructure. Once there's more demand, they seek to increase capacity and increase their infrastructure. So bringing something online like this oftentimes will have a positive effect in that they'll have to make investment in the area because of the demand that will be there with the number of dwelling units. So again, haven't seen the petition, but we think with the setbacks, we don't think there is any merit to reduction in property values based upon presence of apartments. You hear that just about every time, that there is a protest next to an apartment complex. We don't believe that to hold true, and we think the infrastructure along Mustang Road is more than adequate based upon its existence as a state highway. And again, it's fully-developed with four lanes, a full intersection or full interchange, lit intersection at 29th and Mustang.
Do you have sidewalks planned on both the east and the west sides of the park area?
Well, I mean, they're all internally connected, so yes, whatever is required under the code by sidewalks is what we'll have to do. We do not seek any exemption.
And how about screening, fencing?
Again, we adhere to all code requirements as it relates to screening.
But particularly as it relates to the housing areas on the east and on the south? You have screening?
JJ, screening required. Yes, screen's required, and we will meet it.
Okay.
What's your... What did you say the setback was? I know what it is for the east. What did you say, what is it to the south?
Fifty... Was it 50 feet, if I remember, from our discussion?
So I did not mention the south. It's 75 foot off the east.
75, yeah.
And it looks to be about the same from the south.
Based on the location of the parking lot and all that?
Yes, sir.
That's what's off that? Okay.
If you look at the color rendering... Sorry, Cindy.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yep. So again, it's rotated, but yes.
Okay.
Is there vehicular access into the neighborhood from the apartment complex?
No, sir. Our access is to Mustang.
So you can't drive into the complex and exit out into the neighborhood to the east or the south?
No, sir.
Maybe this is a traffic commission question, but just curious to her point about the traffic on Mustang Road. If they were wanting to make that a signalized place where people are trying to exit the... Because I do see her point. If you're... If you've got a lot of traffic coming out of that apartment complex, going out, trying to turn and go south on Mustang Road, that could create problems. I used to live at the Lincoln, and to try to exit the Lincoln at 7:30 a.m. is very... Used to be very, very difficult to cross Lincoln Boulevard to get on the highway.
So somebody could make a request. I mean, there's a couple of things that have to be present. One is funding. Two is you have to meet certain criteria that are mandated prior to allowing a signal to be installed. So it's not as simple as even having the funding and having a desire. Traffic Commission has a set of criteria. Mr. Clare could perhaps speak more eloquently about it, that have to be met in order to warrant a traffic signal. So... But someone could certainly request a signal. If approved, then there's funding, then it can happen. But as of now, I'm not sure about proximity because there's a, like I said, at 29th and Mustang, it is a, you know, signalized intersection right there. I don't know what the distance is required to be between signals, but somebody could file something with the Traffic Commission.
Well, it looked to me like they're in the process of a signal light there at 36th and Mustang Road, too. And I wouldn't be surprised if there is one forthcoming at Whispering Hollow. That's a pretty busy intersection.
Perhaps.
Whispering Hollow would be the public street that is across Mustang to the west.
To the south and west.
Yep. Is that where your access comes out directly across? I guess it's a little north of that, isn't it?
It is a little north. I'd be... Whispering Hollow is really a, what appears to be a small local road that really feeds five-acre tracks.
It's just a pretty busy intersection now.
Were you aware of... I mean, were you... Have you been contacted by anybody or aware of other protests?
I have not been contacted by anyone. We're happy to meet. I will give her my contact information. We can meet between now and City Council. We will make ourselves available.
I did have some, a short conversation with the Councilman Young. She is aware that this type of housing is needed in the area. I tend to agree with her in that regard.
I would say that one of the things that, for Ms. Barrett and her neighbors, you know, is that I agree, commercial over here would be helpful to all the areas. We'd love the sales tax dollars, too. So certainly, we'd be supportive of that. I do think there are greater compatibility issues that are created when the commercial comes directly next to the residential. We spend a lot more time trying to negotiate our way through that with neighbors than we do when a more dense form of residential abuts residential. So my understanding from the applicant, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the commercial zoning that exists today to the west of this site is going to be maintained.
Correct. It's not included in the PUD.
So the idea is that we have commercial along the arterial street front. We have multifamily behind that, and then we have single-family behind that.
Correct.
Which is precisely what you would want if you were to try to draw it up, in my opinion.
Because if you had commercial where we're proposing the multifamily, of course, it would be a back-of-house for the commercial.
The other thing is, and you may not be able to answer this, and that's okay, but I'm curious, how imminent does your client believe construction of these apartments is going to be?
I believe imminent. I believe imminent.
So, and did I understand, Ms. Barrett correctly, that there are no homes built to date? It's hard to get updated imagery. As she said, this is developing pretty rapidly, so I just want to make sure I fully understand what's happening in the area, that along, what is that, Pinnacle Peak Drive, that there are no homes there existing today?
Yes, correct. There are construction...
Okay. So there's, in other words, there's not people that are there that... There's going to be homes built. I'm always a little concerned when we have it, which comes first, and did they get the benefit of the same notice and, you know, all that sort of stuff?
Yeah. Have those homes been sold now, or they're just being built? We don't know that, I guess.
We don't know.
No way to know, if they're speculative or if they're being... Yeah. I mean, I'm inclined to support the application. I'll take feedback from other commissioners, obviously. Would love to hear, but I'll just speak up and say I'm inclined to support it. I would really like for you to provide, Ms. Barrett, your contact information so that if there are additional things that need to be addressed with the development, there are things there. I mean, OG&E is not something that's within our purview to dictate when they develop, you know, power infrastructure. And the road is as good as it's going to get anytime in the near term, and it's developed to handle this traffic, as we're told in our staff report. So with only those two pieces of information to go on, you know, I don't see the reason not to push the application forward, but, Ms. Barrett, I would encourage you to try to organize with your neighbors and get with Mr. Box and get information, assuming that this moves forward today, so that you all have a chance to meet and express any other concerns that you'd like to discuss before it goes on to City Council. And then, of course, you can relay any concern that remains unresolved to your City Councilperson, which in this case would be Barbara Young for Ward 3, so...
Can you mention Ward 3?
If you would like to come back up to The Price is Right, you sure can. Come on down or come back down.
So as stated before, Mustang is a four-lane highway. However, there is not a turn lane. That is really going to be a huge, huge, huge problem. I'm not kidding when I say I have... We've lived in this area for six years, in this area. We've lived in our home for four. The big concern would be if there is not a full turn lane going from Mustang Road through that area, we're going to have a backup of traffic. If there's 150 units, that means there's going to be potentially two cars per unit, thereabouts.
Understood.
That can be a very heavy traffic situation, and right now, there is not a lane at most for this other neighborhood that is to the south that you can see with the Southwest 33rd Terrace and all of those. There is a very short spot. Thank you for that. There's a very short spot that about two cars can sit in there, and it still gets backed up when people are trying to turn left into that neighborhood for a very densely populated area. Right there, I have major concerns that we're going to see more accidents happen in that area.
Got it. Okay.
I would suggest that in these conversations that you'll have with Mr. Box and hopefully Councilwoman Young, that you would bring those concerns, because I'm sure there is a process, a formal process, to address that, as I asked on your behalf before about how do you get a light there, because I think that's going to be the best way to handle that. I don't think they're going to widen the street anytime soon, so...
Right.
That's the solution. And then with OG&E, I would assume, can't a complaint be made to the Corporation Commission or someplace like that? Because that's not within our purview to make that decision.
Yeah, we've made plenty of complaints, and they don't... They just say, "We just don't have the money to build up the infrastructure out there." And I'm concerned that we're going to face even more power outages, you know, having lots more air conditioners turn on.
But if they have more customer, more paying customers, then they have an incentive, a greater incentive to actually provide the infrastructure. So I think this actually helps that problem. But in the short term, I was thinking, can you report to the Corporation Commission? But yeah, it sounds like you've already done everything.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrett. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, quick question about notice to the neighbors. Those empty lots, they look like they are owned each by different individuals. I looked real quick. When we send notice, do we mail it to the address, which would be vacant and wouldn't have a mailbox? Do we have a way that we actually send it to the owner wherever they may live in town, or... My guess is we don't actually give them notice because there's no house there.
You send it to...
Address of record.
There's a mailing address associated at the tax assessors.
Right.
And is that who we send it to?
Yes.
Okay.
The statute requires you send it to the current address under the tax rolls. So that's where it goes.
Okay.
Same reason that we get a lot of renters that say that they don't get noticed, because it gets mailed to the landlord.
Got it. Okay.
Other questions from commissioners on this or discussion we need to have? I think we... It's time to see where we are. But if there's no further discussion...
I would just like to really encourage Mr. Box to take the opportunity between now and City Council some in this discussion.
Yeah, so I gave her all ways to get ahold of me, so...
To put your best foot forward as a good neighbor here, and, you know, listen and learn and see what you can do to improve that relationship.
That is always the foot I put forward, Ms. Powers.
Nobody on this board is going to comment. Commissioner Coffey, do you want to make a motion, ma'am? If so, we would need to amend TE 1, and we need to add the TE 2 for the 50-foot requirement on dumpsters.
Well, I do recognize the concerns that you raised and take those to heart. I travel that intersection occasionally, and I know it's a difficult one. Even my getting in and out off of Sarah Road has the same issues that you described, so I would encourage you to stay in contact with Mr. Box and discuss those issues with him. We have a reputable developer here as well as a reputable builder on this project. I think it will, in fact, enhance the neighborhood, and a need has been identified for this housing development. And with that in mind, I would make the motion recommending to City Council, PUD 1861.
Is that a motion to approve, recommend approval? Yes. Commissioner Coffey?
Yes.
Motion... And that's subject to the TEs, as we discussed?
Yes.
Both. So amending TE 1 to limit it to 150 units, correct, Mr. Box?
Yes, sir.
And adding TE 2 to require dumpsters be located no closer than 50 feet to any residential use?
Well, 50 feet off the east property line.
Or the south.
Yeah, solar panels.
Well, I don't... Yeah, that's fine. You can't really say residential, because of course, this is residential.
Under... Well, right. Yeah. 50 feet from the property line. I'll take that. Okay. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes on a motion to recommend approval to City Council, PUD 1861, subject to the TEs as amended and read into the record. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Thank you, and thank you for coming down with us today, Ms. Barrett. Next item on today's agenda is item 16.
This is PUD 1863, application to rezone 19300 North May Avenue from PUD 1559.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application that'll take the current PUD and actually reduce down the density that could otherwise be built today. So the current PUD, PUD 1559, allows a combination of multifamily and commercial. Based upon the way that the tract lines were drawn in the PUD, we could not get the product that we want to fit within those lines, and it's outside the scope of what you can do for an administrative amendment. So it required a rezoning application. But as your staff report tells you, what we could build today without any further approval is 734 multifamily units. We're reducing it down to 640, so a reduction of almost 100 units that could otherwise be built today. So we believe this to be compatible. There are no technical evaluations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Your dumpster regulations for tract 1, which would abut the commercial to the residential, that's 30 feet. Can you agree to 50?
Sure.
And then, I guess, tract 2, similarly, probably be ideal not to put dumpsters up to the backs of those lots, which I'm assuming are developed?
I'm sure that will be fine.
Okay. And then, last thing I had, because this is a Ward 8 case, which is why I jumped out here, is how many signs are we putting under 9.0 or 9.10?
So we don't know. I mean, it's a large tract. You would have multiple...
What would the base zoning allow you to have?
So the base zoning, well, so it's C3. The base zoning is going to limit it based upon your frontage.
Frontage. Yeah, no, that's how much... What did you know with the linear footage?
I don't. I don't.
Okay. I'll stew on that a second. I'm curious to know how many signs we think we need so we can...
So we do have to have a specific plan application here.
Could we add into a TE the ability to review signage at the specific plan stage?
Sure.
That would appease me, I think. And I think that's the only thing I have. Do any other commissioners have thoughts on this one? I do not have anybody signed up to speak. I will, of course, check, but other commissioners have comments on this one?
Just that it would be nice for us to be able to see, to reserve the right to review on the connectivity...
Pedestrian circulation?
Yeah, the circulation plan, all of that, including pedestrian connectivity. And one of your favorite things, Mr. Chairman, curb cuts. I just wondered, I just assumed that was going to come up at some point, or if we're just fine with what the code says.
Well, it'd be, I mean, it would be 200 feet of separation. It would require 200 feet from the intersection. I mean, you know, it's along 192nd, so...
Not an area I travel very often.
Yeah. I mean, I just, to be candid, me neither. That's a little bit further up in the ward than where I live, but... That's a little bit further up in the ward than where I live, but I'm not bothered by the requirement, as long as there's 200 feet of separation there, which, you know, they're agreeing to, they're going to have to meet that unless they come in to change it later, Is there anybody who wants to be heard on PUD 1863? Okay, hearing nobody. If there's no discussion for commissioners on it, I would take a motion to recommend approval to City Council, subject to adding the TE language that the Planning Commission is going to reserve the right to specifically review and amend the signage regulations under 9.10 and the pedestrian connectivity at the specific plan stage. Any issue with that?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1863 with the following amendments. One, that the dumpster distance requirement be changed from 30 feet to 50 feet.
Yep.
And that we reserve the right at the specific plan stage to review the signage and pedestrian connectivity.
Motion, I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast? Nope. Call them out. Paul, come on now.
Thank you.
Thank you. That item is recommended for approval. Next item on our agenda today is item 17.
This is case PUD SP 1633A, application for a specific plan pursuant to approval of PUD 1633, located at 1300 Northwest 178th Street.
Cecilia Schaefer of MacArthur Associated Consultants, 25 Northwest 146th Street, on behalf of the applicant. We're here to present a proposed credit union with a drive-through, parking, and signage as part of the specific plan requirement.
Excellent, thank you. This is also a Ward 8 case. I reviewed it. I'll point out, for the purposes of the record, that staff's review of the specific plan for development indicates that the proposal is consistent with the technical requirements, PUD 1633, master development statement and the master development plan. So I don't have any issues or questions for you. Very straightforward. At least we know now what's going on the other side of Griffin Drive. That's what we were curious about last meeting. Now we know. This is the east side, so there we have it. Any other questions on this from commissioners? Anybody who want to be heard today on PUD SP 1633A? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the specific plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the specific plan.
I have a motion to approve the specific plan. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Commissioner Coffey? She's voted aye.
Aye.
And that item is approved. Thank you very much for coming down to see us today. Next item on the agenda today is item 18, and I believe Commissioner Privet, you're recusing yourself from this item? So we'll give him just a second to leave, and then we can introduce it. Go ahead, Mr. Beller.
This is case PC 10781, application to rezone 10400 Southeast 29th Street from R1 to C3.
Hi, my name is Lenita Fleming, and I'm speaking on behalf of Buck Selsby. The lot on 29th Street, we would like to have it rezoned for a C3. It's currently a residential. We feel like it would go for a C3. Going down 29th Street, there is zoning C3, C4, I2 on the property. And what he is wanting to put on there is a, two buildings, one to support a real estate brokerage and also commercial signing business, and then some leased properties, some other leased buildings that would support those businesses, far as like title companies and mortgage companies, et cetera. We do not have anything planned for it as far as a building goes. We wanted to see if we could get it rezoned before we did that.
Understood, and I'm so sorry, I missed your name.
Lenita Fleming.
Lenita Fleming, got it. Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Well, this is Commissioner Privet's ward. He did recuse himself. I have a couple of questions for you. If my memory serves me, to some extent, these parcels start to look the same after a while, but we heard this case fairly recently. There was an attempt to rezone this property, and it was, as I recall, was it I1? Does anybody remember?
I think it was.
Okay, and I, and I believe that we recommended denial on it. I thought we asked them to go back and work on a PUD, and maybe they just didn't do it, but...
I think the issue on that was, they was wanting to put a storage building in there, and they wanted access to be on Noma Street and not on 29th Street.
I believe this application also requests access to Noma, does it not?
We don't necessarily have to have access to Noma, because there's 630 feet of frontage on 29th Street, so it's plenty for exit and entry. So Noma doesn't necessarily have to, we don't need Noma.
But this is a straight zoning request, so we wouldn't have any ability to dictate that, right?
Yeah. I think, and I guess JJ or somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, they'd be able to have a curb cut on it, wouldn't they, on Noma? They'd be able to do that in a, in a straight rezone.
You do have the ability to restrict access on the local street if you have access on a arterial.
Even through the application that waits presented today?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful to know. All right. Any other questions from commissioners on this one? I do have one person signed up to speak, so.
I just wanted to be clear, did I understand that your intended use of the property is for office uses?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Did I understand that your intended use of the property is for office uses?
Property, yeah, office. Well, he, he has a business where he signs, he sells commercial signs. The other investor is a brokerage where it would be office usage on one side and sells on the, retail on the...
I see, okay, thank you.
So it'd be like a mixture.
Okay.
Did you say signs or siding?
Signs, signs.
JJ, just, just before we hear from the public on this, would you talk about what the setback requirements would be, just with C3 abutting that residential just to the south? I'm assuming that's what we're going to hear about, so it'd be nice to know exactly what would happen if we were to pass it.
C3 would be a 15-foot building setback, and the first five of that 15 would be a landscape buffer.
And then the screening requirement would be?
Screening six, minimum six, maximum of eight, site proof.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Fleming. We're going to call now. Donna Pryor, are you with us? Come on up and tell us what we need to know about this item. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Donna Pryor. I currently live in Morris, Oklahoma, 14975 North 300 Road. But I am, I am named on the property, myself and my sister, with my father, immediately south of the proposed land on Noma Road.
And you guys were here last time, weren't you?
Yes.
I thought so.
It came before the November 2020 meeting. Mrs. and Mr. Clark were trying to rezone it. They were specifying for a storage facility. The letter that we got this time doesn't specify the purpose of it. It just says the purpose was to change it from commercial to industrial, but yet it's not commercial. I was told that this was an error on the letter, but this was the first that we had heard about what they're wanting to put there. Sharing a property line with this is part of our concern, as well as increased traffic on Noma Road. You know, it's impossible to separate our land from this when you share a property line.
Sure.
So, you know, to just put a fence up, well, that's, but at the same time, we don't really want a wall compound to feel like we're, you know. We moved out there in 1972. It's been a quiet country neighborhood. We would really like it to keep that way.
Understood. Thanks for coming down today, Ms. Pryor. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Any questions on this from commissioners or discussion? Happy to weigh in if you'd like. Okay, that's what I'll do then. We heard this case once before. It was a self-storage case. As I recall, I think we, and Ms. Pryor, you'd probably remember better than I would, but I think we, I think we recommended denial on it, is what I, is what my recollection was because of the uncertainty. There's a lot of C4 to the west. There's a lot that could be done here. It does affront Southeast 29th. I'm a little overly sensitive to the fact that our base zoning districts don't give a great accommodation to the area that's around it, and I'm a little curious that, you know, while I really appreciate you telling us what you intend to do, what we have to consider is the Planning Commission, before we make a recommendation to City Council, is the compatibility impacts that this could create for the surrounding area. So what C3 would allow, if you decided to sell it after it were rezoned, could be a gas station. It could be a fast-food restaurant with a speaker, you know, two feet off their fence line that, you know, I mean, we can, what we're told is that we can restrict access to Noma Road, which does make me feel a lot better, that, you know, that would sort of force the site to be oriented to 29th Street anyway. But I'm a little bit torn on this one, again, just because of the nature of the area, the fact that this is really, you've got some odd commercial that exists today. I don't mean that disrespectfully, if that applies to anybody here, but to the west, that, you know, it's not really used what you would think C4 would be used for. But the rest of it is a residential area, and so it is a little concerning. I think probably my preference would be if this were coming through as a PUD, just because it would give us more certainty about what we could restrict and protect. I want to, my inclination is always to want to encourage and allow development. We'd love to get sales tax dollars here, but when you, it doesn't sound like we're going to get any, unfortunately, but when you say that we're going to use it for, you know, a real estate office, that's a lot less intensive than a, you know, a gas station. So there are ways that we can use, use units and tools within our zoning toolbox to, to limit this and make sure that the folks that are going to be impacted by this are impacted at a minimal level. That's going to require you to renotice, require you to start the process over. So I don't know how other commissioners feel, but that's kind of the direction I'm leaning, so I'd be curious to hear how other people feel about it.
I would be a no vote unless we had a PUD. I think we want to eliminate controversial uses. I think that we need to enhance the screening requirement. I want to be absolutely certain that there won't be curb cuts on Noma. I would feel more comfortable if we did that.
Okay. Anybody else feel differently than that? Well, seems like I know where we are. My suggestion to you for your own benefit would be to take a continuance. It would need to be to probably, I guess that could be, could it be the first meeting in January? Second meeting in January? And remind me that date, somebody. 27th? Okay. So it'd be January 27th?
Okay.
Was that, okay. So we're going to continue this case to January the 27th, 2022, presumably, so I just want you guys to be aware that are present as well. If there's no further discussion on that, I'll take the motion if somebody wants to make it, and Commissioner Privet's absent.
Sure, and I will make the motion, but I'd also encourage the property owners, I think you should visit with the neighbors, because we're, we're going to be very sensitive to the things that they have to say about this issue, so it'd be great if, when you come back, you all are in mutual agreement about the screening, the lighting, all of these issues that, that they're concerned about. So I would encourage you all to meet.
I'm wondering, since Commissioner Hinkle has recused himself, whether another commissioner might be willing to step up to kind of wrangle that situation, or at least act as a...
I'm happy to do that. If there's some discussion that needs to happen, you can get my information from city staff and reach out, and I'll attend a discussion if that needs to be done, as you guys are trying to work through that process. Yeah. Happy to do it.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we continue PC 10781 to the January 27th meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to continue PC 10781 to January 27th, 2022. It's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast.
I'm sorry.
And that item has been continued. And you guys may exchange contact information while you're still here, so probably be helpful. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda today is item 19.
This is case PC 10785, application to rezone 9211 Southeast 44th Street from R1 with AE1 Airport Environment Zone overlay to I2.
Hi there. My name is Chris Stone. I'm the owner of Sig LLC, and was up here on behalf of PC 10785, and just trying to get it rezoned from R1 to I2. Basically, I'm just planning on putting some industrial-type buildings up there for commercial businesses, some, you know, possibilities of contractors that work out at Tinker. Tinker, I believe, just bought the land across the street to the south, and it's currently zoned I1, and so that's what I'm seeking.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Privet, welcome back. This is your ward. Do you have questions on item 19?
I don't, but I know there's some people signed up to speak, so I'd like to hear from them.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have questions for the applicant before I call on those folks? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
First person I have signed up to speak on this is Diane, I believe, I believe it says Diane. Diane Alexander?
I am Diane Alexander. I live at 9228 Southeast 36.
Welcome.
Which is the first street to the north of 44th. My property, the back of my and my husband's property, at, at the corner, abuts that property. We have owned, my, my family and myself have owned this house and this property, this two and a half acres, for 73 years. Most of our neighborhood, now we're all on acreages, most of these people I knew growing up that still live there. The average short time is probably 40 years that other people have lived. We don't move, we stay, okay? We were in California retired. We came home, back to home, which is our property. We have great concern with anything labeled industrial going right behind our, our acreage. One, we have a lot of wildlife. There's deer everywhere. There's all kinds of animals, foxes, you name them. They're in my pasture all the time. Those animals will no longer have a home. We're concerned with what's forecasted for Tinker. One, there'll be an increased traffic up and down 44th Street. It'll be harder to get off and on a Douglas, where we have to get to the interstate with. We're going to have more traffic noise, and all of this, that we have not had all of this time. It'll be greatly increased. We are few in numbers, because we are on acreages. They range from four tenths of one acre up to 10 acres. So there's not very many of us, but we feel that our voice needs to be heard, that we want our home to not have right behind it, because if this one property falls, as I would call it, there's several other ones right next to it, and I'll guarantee you, they'll be back in here wanting those industrial also. And that we do not wish to have abutted to our back property after all this time.
Fair enough.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. The next person I have signed up to speak is William Alexander. Something tells me you're related to Ms. Alexander, Mrs. Alexander.
I'm the other half.
The worse half, no doubt. Go ahead.
As she was saying, it's always, it's, the property has always been R1. We want to stay R1, and I want to offer a few comments from the review of the staff report, okay? And starting on page one, under the comprehensive plan use and topology layer, it says the UF layer maintains agricultural land and large acreage estates until the area is ready for urbanization, which I mean, I take to mean residential, since it's always been residential. Then you go to page seven. Yeah. I think this is under the general, general, I've got too many papers here. Under the general plan, under, under planning, okay? And then you go to this number two, compatibility, and then underneath that, under building scale and size, site design, there is italicized typing that, I think is staff, staff comment. And then, and in the middle of that, it says that site design was unknown and cannot be stipulated in a base rezoning, or a base zoning request. I don't know what a base zoning request is, but what it sounds like it is, we don't know what's going to be done.
So, so let me help you there, Mr. Alexander. There are, there's kind of two tracks people can follow. can follow. They can, they can make a rezoning request under a base zoning district like I2, which just allows them to use what the code sets out as the requirements, limitations, et cetera, for that base zoning district if it's approved, recommended by us, and ultimately approved by City Council. The other track they can take is an SPUD or a PUD, depending on the size of the parcel, and that allows for specific negotiation that alters the underlying code for I2 and lets us sort of negotiate with applicants on things that are specific to that parcel that could impact other parcels. So a base zoning request just means they're going to zone at I2, and whatever the code says that I2 allows, it can be done.
Yeah. Well, the comment I was going to make here is that it seems like throughout here, we really don't know what's the plan. There's been no plan, there's been no contact, there's been no communication, there's been no meeting. We don't know. The only thing we've received is, is a notice from you guys that says they want to rezon, you know, rezon. Why? I mean, what does that mean? What do they want to build? All this kind of stuff. So then you go to page 10. And under the second, second paragraph there on the page, or I mean, the first paragraph on the page, the last line, it says, "Commercial and light industrial uses may be appropriate in these areas provided they do not negatively impact agricultural operations," which to my knowledge, there's none occurring now, although it used to be way back when, a sunflower farm. But, and then it says, "and character or the potential to eventually urbanize." Well, the whole area is residential, so it does have an impact, okay? And, and there's houses all around the area, you know? So this is really a residential area, and it should remain a residential area. And then, the other thing I would say is I had read in the paper that the city's plan to close Douglas because of this other project of Tinker. From the reading of the newspaper article, and the way I understand it is Southeast 44th, they're only going to close the south half of 44. So I don't know what the, what kind of road's going to be there to be able to even get into this property, quite honestly.
I believe it's going to be a westbound road only.
I'm sorry?
Westbound road only to Douglas.
No, it's just eastbound.
Right.
Douglas is that south.
No. On 44th, the lane, the one lane that's going to be open on 44th is going to be westbound to Douglas.
Right.
Yes.
And then Douglas will be...
I guess it'd be the north side of that because they're closing the, the south half of the, of 44th.
Yes. Correct.
Right.
The way I understand it.
And then Douglas will be closed from 44 to 74.
All the way to 74.
To the, well, all the way to the, the north part of 74.
Right.
You know, that kind of thing.
Yep.
Yep.
So I don't know, is there still going to be a road there for access to this, to this thing here?
Sounds like a one-way road.
One-way road?
Yeah.
That's what it sounded like, which I don't know if that's...
So we won't be able to go...
Ms. Alexander, there's, there's at least three people at home that would love to know what you're saying. So if you want to join the conversation, you're welcome to come join. Mr. Alexander?
If they only have half of the 44th Street open for one direction only to the West, we can't go east to go to the interstate? You know, that limits us to I40. Period.
If, if that's, if that's true, that 44 is closed, you would not be able to go east. You'd have to go west, which would take you to I40.
We, we would get, if from our house, going west takes us to Douglas. Period. Our street goes and turns and hooks into 44, it becomes D-Drive and hooks into 44. We can't go that way. We could drive in a circle, I mean, in a square all day.
Yep.
So it's not a help, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Alexander, Mrs. Alexander.
And then the other, the other comment is that, oh, now, other Tinker project, or the other project that's ongoing, which is not the subject today, but similarly, that project, there's been no public notice, there's been no meetings, there's been nothing. Only thing I've seen is in, in the newspaper.
Well, we, we very much have had a public meeting. It was held here.
It hasn't been, it was not publicized. We have not been noticed, and we live nearby.
It was, it was noticed.
And we were not noticed.
I understand that you may not have received notice, but it was noticed in accordance with state statute, and the hearing was here, and it is now moving along to City Council. It was recommended by us for approval. I do not believe City Council's heard the case.
You would think that the notice would be done to people, for people that are living nearby.
We, we don't set the...
We're going to be more impacted by anybody in the area.
Mr. Alexander, just, I'm sorry, but we don't set the notice requirements, so you understand. We adhere to the state statute that dictates to us what we have to do to provide notice, and everybody receives the same notice in that stat, as required by that statute. So notice was sent, a hearing was held, it was recommended by us for approval, but it's going to City Council. If you have concerns, I'd suggest that you contact your City Council person.
Just a quick question there.
Okay. And then we need to wrap up our discussion so we can visit.
Okay. Get out of your hair here, but we live nearby, so it's strange that we would not have received a notice.
It's 300 feet.
300 feet only.
300 feet? Well, we don't live within 300 feet then.
Yeah. There is a stipulation there that a certain number of people have to be...
If that's what it is, then okay, you know?
Yep. But I would encourage you to contact your City Council person, but, yeah. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Lodge?
Yes, if I could, I just have one point of clarification on that.
Tell the Alexanders who you are, sir.
The, the closure request on that that was heard before does not close 44th Street. It will remain as two-lane road in both directions.
Excellent. Could you tell them who you are because they have no idea?
Oh, sorry about that. Barry Lodge, Public Works Engineering Department.
Excellent.
I'm with Public Works Engineering.
So you're, you're confirming for us that it will remain a two-lane road?
Yes. It will, it'll remain two-way, two-direction. That, that won't be closed at all.
Okay. That's great news. Wonderful news. Commissioner Privet, any comments on this or discussion you want to have?
Well, mainly what the Protestants have expressed, the straight I2 zoning is my main concern. I'm next to residential straight I2 zoning.
Okay.
Not thrilled about it.
Yeah. I, I think what's probably a little frustrating for the Alexanders is that they, and they're right, to the east of this is, in fact, residential. To the south, and, and where this property is directly to the west of it, is actually industrial and certainly is going to continue to go that way because of operations affiliated with Tinker Air Force Base. So on the one hand, I think this area is an industrial area. On the other hand, I'm certainly sensitive to the fact that this is kind of where the property ends, so it is a bit unique. I, I would, given the nature of this and the, the nature of the adjacency to the existing structures, the large lots, the setbacks and all that, I'm more comfortable here with the straight zoning request than I have been on some other cases today, but I'm certainly open to other commissioners' feedback about whether they would prefer to see a PUD or they'd prefer to discuss the straight zoning request.
There's no way I can support straight I2.
Okay.
I think, you know, given what we know now about the expansion of Tinker, the fact that this is in an airport environs own, this would not be an area where we could promote residential development.
No.
It's not a piece of property that's appropriate for commercial development. You know, if, if it were an I1 request, I might be inclined to entertain that, but I, I do not, there's no way I can support I2.
Is your, is your concern with I2 just the outside storage aspects?
Absolutely, yes. And it just, it just allows for a number of sort of heavier, if that's the right way.
It's more intensive.
Industrial, you know, uses.
Yeah. And, and basically, I mean, you know, because the lake is just not, not very far along, I figured it was just be a opportunity for outdoor boat and RV storage and that type of thing. But we currently lease the space, and it's almost identical to what I'm trying to do, and it doesn't seem loud or anything like that, or...
We understand. Again, I think you probably heard me say this to the last people. It's not so much that I'm worried that you're not being honest with us about what you intend to use it for. It's that once we zone this property, we don't ever get to hear it again, and whoever comes behind you has the right, as I explained to Mr. Alexander, to use I2 in whatever manner the code would allow at that time. So do other commissioners have opinions they want to share about either, so I can kind of give the applicant his options? Anybody have a different feeling or opinion on it?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Powers, and I think a PUD is appropriate. I think it's usually our plan to, to try to, you know, scale down the intensity of the uses. So, I mean, you've got all this I2, it seems like closer to Douglas, the C4, and then it's, it makes sense to me that we would have some kind of step down between those heavy uses and the residences to the north and east.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is the northeast corner of what is the, you know, the industrial portion of, of Douglas and the area around it. So I agree with that.
Low-impact storage, and, you know, that's no problem for me.
Okay. So...
We're not going to get that on the straight zoning, so.
Would you, are you in agreement, Commissioner Privet?
A PUD, yeah. Continuance in a PUD is what I would recommend.
So your options are, we can proceed with a vote on the I2, doesn't sound good, or we can take a continuance to January 27th. You can renotice. You'll have to prepare what in this case would be, how big is this parcel? It'd either be an SPD or PUD. I don't recall how big the acreage is, but to reapply for that.
Limit, basically.
Correct.
Yeah. 10 acres of PUD.
Yeah.
And I would strongly advise you take the opportunity in the meantime to meet with your neighbors and...
Yeah, for sure.
If they can give you some input about ways that you can ameliorate the impacts of this.
I, I will speak up and say I am generally favorable of this application, and so long as I'm convinced that there is not going to be a compatibility issue at the edge, I'm inclined to support the application.
I mean, I, I think Tinker's going to, you know, Tinker could do an eminent domain on all those properties over there. I mean, that's the only place for it to really, for Tinker to grow. So I, I mean, I think at some point in the near future, it's going to go that direction, whether it's 10 years or...
That may be the case, but that's not before us today. So if, if you, if you want a continuance to, to work on a PUD, I can certainly, we can, we can entertain that, and I can call for vote there, or we can vote as it is today.
I'll continue on with a PUD.
So that would be January the 27th of 2022? Is that...
That should be forward.
Okay. So if there's no discussion on that, Commissioner Privet, I think we're ready to have that motion for the continuance?
I'll move to continue PC 10785 to the January 27th meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to continue PC 10785 to the January 27th, 2022 meeting. Please cast your vote when available. All votes should be cast, and that item has been continued. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming down, Alexanders. Appreciate both of you. Next item on the agenda today is item 20. This is PUD 1865, application to rezone 13100 Memorial Springs Court from PUD 745, 1745.
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a, a portion of a, a PUD that was recently approved. There is, of a mixed-use development. There, this is a PUD to increase the density of the allowable multifamily. It still stays within the overall mixed-use development, but on the size of the tract, the, the user that is looking at this needed more units on that, and therefore, we're back in front of you. Staff has recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward, sir. Do you have comments or questions on this for the applicant?
I don't. Specific plan is required, so we're going to see it again. I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. I, I just have, I have one curiosity question, one thing else. Our staff report indicates that plan conformance could be strengthened by a connection to 122nd. How would that even be possible?
So there's existing softball fields to the...
Right.
...south, and, but there, but that is in a PUD that allows for I2 use. Originally, when this came before you, that request was also made, and because of the, the I2 adjacent to the proposed mixed-use development, we don't believe that that would be a good connection between uses.
Okay.
And therefore, it was, it was approved without that connection required in the beginning.
Got it. I just wanted to address that. I thought it was interesting component of the staff report, so I just was curious about your take on that. So I don't have anybody's... Oh, yes, I do. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'll start out. I've got a few people that want to be heard on this. Jane Van Brammer, Brammer? Close? What was the pronunciation?
Van Brammer.
Van Brammer. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. I, I live at 2500 North Broadway in Edmonds. Can I give you, I have some brief letters. Can I give you...
If you'll start them right over there, Commissioner Ford should be happy to circulate them this direction.
So I'm the CEO of Oakwood Springs Hospital. It's a property directly adjacent to the proposed project. We are a 72-bed behavioral health hospital, serving individuals with mental health and substance use disorders. We operate inpatient, partial hospitalization, intensive outpatient, and we serve approximately 3,500 people a year. I wanted to make a few comments and design considerations on the project. In terms of section four, the site and the surrounding area, please note directly adjacent to the west of this site is a hospital, not medical office, offices. Our facility operates 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. We provide emergency round-the-clock services. In terms of section 7.1 streets, access will be from the existing cul-de-sac. Please ensure the traffic flow does not limit the avail, the ability of emergency vehicles to enter, to access Oakwood Springs. In terms of 7.3 and 7.5, the gas and water, the PUD states the water lines will be extended from the existing public water supply. Ensure, please ensure the water main carries enough pressure and volume to maintain our water supply and pressure for the hospital. Again, we're 24/7, 365 days a year. Any shut-off that needs to occur as part of construction with water, gas, and electric will need to occur overnight. In terms of section 8.1, use and development regulations, it's unclear in the PUD where the food trucks, bathrooms, and outdoor seedings will be located and where those people visiting those amenities will park. Section eight, 8.4, the landscape and screening regulations, they must promote compatibility between land use of the site and the abutting properties. We believe both fencing and landscaping needs to be installed along the property line that's directly across from Oakwood's side parking lot and our patient courtyards. The distance from the hospital courtyards to the property line is only 120 feet. Our, we have open courtyards, and steps should be taken by the developer to maintain patient confidentiality. And lastly, comments in regard to 8.7, the parking regulations. The PUD states covered parking structures are permitted to be located along the property lines with no setback requirements. We believe setback needs to be present as the property line is approximately eight feet from Oakwood parking spaces. The PUD also gives some mention of utilizing the commercial garage overlooks our patient courtyards, which does not allow for patient confidentiality and infringes upon the privacy of the individuals in our care. Can it be constructed with no openings on our, on the side that's facing us, or those very high openings so that people can't look out very easily? The PUD states required parkings can be accomplished through the use of cross-access parking agreements between adjacent properties. Parking will not be permitted on Oakwood Springs property and would be dangerous along Memorial Springs Court due to the significant increase in traffic. Oakwood parking is strictly for our employees, patients, and patients' families. And lastly, is all parking contained within the parking garage? The rendering shows no visitor parking lots, and I'm just curious how many spaces will be available for the 275 residential units, the square foot office space, and the food truck outdoor and eating areas. I appreciate the opportunity to make comments.
We appreciate you coming down today, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grubbs, you want to address some of the stuff, because a lot of these, I think, are, are questions about uncertainties involving the development, so you may help us and our guests today to hear a response on some of those.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, we have the applicant again. The, so, this is true. Access will be taken from the existing cul-de-sac street. Plans are for the overall mixed-use development to have an additional access to the, to and across the pond in the future, and additional access to Memorial Road. But the original application always intended for access to be from this cul-de-sac, and no access points are permitted on this side of the drainage to Memorial. So access will, will need to be taken from that cul-de-sac. As far as, water lines will be extended. We, we obviously have to make multiple connections with water lines. We're not going to be allowed to have it a dead end. Mr. Dustin Seagrees would be happy to come up here and tell you that.
Oh, he told us last time. He sounded good, too. You made your match there.
The, and that would go with electric telephone gas. There will have to be adequate service to, to serve this development. Food trucks, bathrooms, outdoor seating be located. This was, this was in the original PUD and a copy of. It would be, it would be interior to the development for, for events. Don't know exactly where that would be, but it would be part of the overall mixed-use development. So it'd be interior, it's not going to be exterior over on the side of a parking garage or to the south. It just wouldn't make sense. 8.4, landscape and screening regulations. We don't specify, but that would be residential to commercial multifamily. JJ, I don't know if screening, I don't think screening is required there. As you can see on the concept end, we do have to come back in the specific plan stage. Anticipated that that parking garage would go on the west side of the, of the multifamily structure, which, so the structure could face inward to the mixed-use development. Really don't know what those setbacks are on the west and south, so that's why we have worded it that way on those setbacks. I don't also know whether or not I can commit to there being no openings in that west or south due to ventilation. I'm not a pro on that. So I don't know that I could, I could sit there and say there can't be any openings on the west and south of the parking garage.
Just, just a second. Go ahead, Mr. Grubbs.
But the, as far as confidentiality there, you know, I think that the parking garage over there, you know, people's apartments and things would not be overlooking their courtyard in that, in that way. Let's see, what have I answered?
I, I think the screening and landscaping requests laid out in the letter. The parking regulations, I take it face value that you're building structured parking to support the development, which is why you don't see a lot of parking land on screen. Is there visitor parking, which is a question she had, that is not on your site plan?
So we've made the statement in here that share, shared parking is allowed throughout the mixed-use development. So therefore, there, with the use of the garage and the support of the mixed-use development, there will be adequate parking. We're not looking for a parking reduction.
Got it. Okay. Okay.
I think I would feel most comfortable, since we do have specific plan already in, in this, let's just reserve the right to review on screening and parking and traffic circulation, and then we can just have this discussion.
Yeah, I mean ironically, I don't even know, obviously you weren't aware of the protest, but I think the way that you have it laid out here with the parking garage is the best way to ensure that there's limited disruption to the operation next door as opposed to putting it on the east side and shifting the entire residential use over where people are there all the time. I think you've accommodated it more than you realized. I'm not sure how I feel about trying to design a parking garage to protect somebody doesn't, I mean, they don't get out of their car and look over a courtyard. They're going to get out of their car and walk to the apartment. I just don't, that's taking it a step too far for my design liking for this body. But I'm certainly open to thoughts other commissioners might have, but I don't know why we would go down that road. There are ventilation issues with those parking structures, too, so. Okay. I think you've addressed most of the issues that she laid, laid out. And I think what Commissioner Pennington is recommending, I certainly support. I think that makes sense, that we would reserve the right to review the location of the parking garage, i.e., it needs to stay on the west side. We'd want to reserve the right to specifically review the location of the food court and all that to ensure those amenities wouldn't impact operationally. That's an easy thing you can deal with there. What was the other thing you wanted to reserve?
Traffic circulation, since she had some concerns about that.
You in agreement with all that?
Yeah, I only have one access point here to the, to that cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and in the future, like I said, it's intended to be circulated and back to Memorial, so we have plenty of access to support the development.
Got it. Okay. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know if other commissioners feel differently. Commissioner Powers?
Just whether there would be an opportunity for the protestors to, if protest isn't even quite the right word, to attend and participate in that. We don't generally notice those kinds of.
The specific plan. Well, what I, what I would ask, you're keenly aware at this point of who your neighbor is and where they are. Those plans need to be shared. Ms. Van Brammer, if you're not given those plans, certainly let city staff know. We would want to know that. And so that we, we want to ensure that you have a chance to review them based on your comments here. And we're trying to incorporate those concerns into what we're doing today, so.
I have her, I'll get her direct contact information and, and my best foot's better than David, so I'll make.
No doubt. Okay. We appreciate it. Any other discussion or concerns we want to relay on this, or everybody good?
I only want to ask, at risk of delay, does whether Ms. Brammer had anything else she wanted?
No.
Make sure she knows she could come back up if she had something else for us.
Yeah.
Good.
My only point was, if the parking garage has windows that are open for ventilation, could they be up higher? Could you just raise it a little bit? I understand that you said they need to have ventilation.
Could we, could we require that? I don't, I don't know. What I would say is that now that you are connected with the applicant, which I certainly wish would have happened before this hearing, but it didn't.
I like saw the notice on Friday, so I scrambled.
I understand, I understand. But I would relay that concern to, to Mr. Grubbs and let him try to see if there's a way he can accommodate that. And you guys work together, and if there's an issue with that, then certainly let us know that. So we will certainly ask Mr. Grubbs when it comes back for a specific plan if he's visited with you, so.
Thank you very much.
I would say, I would just point out, I know you have some hesitancy about the design issue, but on the oak, well, just, it's just oak, there's none of the, at, at Penn and Northwest Sixway. There's a temple next door, they have a daycare center. They had the similar concerns about some screening on the side of their parking garage that's exposed to that. And I think that's a valid concern, that kind of privacy issue.
Yeah.
They managed a way to, to provide it, so I'm sure it can be done.
I didn't think about that, but yeah, I guess we did require something. I just, that's worth looking at, what exactly we, the, the language we used for that. But I, I just don't remember it offhand. If there's nothing further.
If you're, if you're good, I think we're ready for a motion. Now, do I have anybody else signed up to speak? Nobody else wants to be heard on PUD 1865? Saying nobody, I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1865 while reserving the right to review at specific plan, the screening, parking, and traffic circulation.
Parking garage, parking.
Parking garage, parking.
Yeah, and, yeah, screening, circulation, all that. That, okay. I have a motion seconded by Commissioner Clare to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1865, subject to the TE we just added and read into the record. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Commissioner Coffee? There we go. And that item is recommended for approval. Next item on our agenda today is item 21.
This is SPD 1359, application to rezon 2126 Northwest 16th Street from R1 to SPD 1513, 1359.
Yes, thanks. Saudi Knight with Knight Land, located at 11900 North Pennsylvania Avenue. I am here representing the applicants. We're just asking to be able to basically redevelop, just need to fix up a, just a single-family home with a auxiliary dwelling unit in the backyard. As you can see here, this, it's a single-family home, it's zoned R1, and we're just needing permits to, to be able to fix up the, the back unit. Both of these structures were constructed during the same time. The, the, the unit in the back is just, is just falling into a state of disrepair, and we need the permits to be able to fix this thing up. The screening, we have privacy fencing all the way around. There's going to be no additional footprint or foundation or anything like that. The roof, the roof line's going to be exactly the same. This unit is approximately 444 square feet that we're seeking to kind of improve. And basically, all the, all the other requirements of R1 will be met. The driveway has been widened just a little bit to accommodate for, for, you know, another, another car potentially. So that is basically, that's basically what, what we have going on here. Let me take a look at my notes to make sure. Yeah, that's what we have. The, the front unit is, is just a three, three-bedroom, two-bath home. And so the back unit is just going to be a, just basically a, a studio apartment style. It's going to be one bathroom, have a kitchen, and that's basically it.
Okay.
Open, open kind of concept.
Great. All right, well, thank you. Commissioner Highsmith isn't with us today. He did relay that he's generally supportive of the application, he didn't have any concerns. I don't, I don't have anybody signed up to speak. I don't know if other commissioners have concerns or want to have discussion on this.
I'm, I'm going to just say this, I don't want to draw this out, but as we're dealing with these kinds of additional dwelling unit developments, you know, Ward 6, like Ward 7 and Ward 2 have a lot of space available for this kind of doubled-up development. And this is done in an SPD, which is great. If Commissioner Highsmith didn't see it necessary to deal with them more specifically than that, that's fine. When I'm dealing with these in my own ward, I want to know if, if the intent is to keep the existing single-family structure in place. I want that memorialized in the, in the SPD. And it, obviously, any unit can be destroyed by fire or whatever, and if so, then there have to be alternative. But, but as it stands, I don't see anything in here that would permit them, that would keep them from, you know, leveling it and building two much larger, single-family residential. And so I, I think that's just a little bit different way to look at it. Maybe that's fine, you know, maybe it's not on any given lot, you know? But I, I, I do think we need to kind of feel our way as we're doing these additional dwelling unit approvals. And as I said, if Commissioner Highsmith is fine with it, that's fine with me.
I, I think the code should, I know we're doing the code update, we're in the middle of all that. I think the code should address that as well, too, so.
Other comments from commissioners?
In this particular situation, there's no plans to knock over the, the main dwelling.
I get that, and I'm not saying that I doubt that. But I'm, but as you've heard, said already, what you're planning to do with the property and what would be permitted
Right.
to some future owner are two different things.
Yep. Okay. I don't know, I'll just, to be 100% sure, is there anybody here who wants to be heard on SPD 1359? Okay. I don't have anybody. So if there's no further discussion in Commissioner Highsmith's absence, I'll need a motion on this from somebody else.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to recommend approval of SPD 1359 to City Council.
Okay. I have a motion, I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with the project. Next item on our agenda today is item 23. Item 22 is deferred to January 13th.
Item 23 is SPD 1362, application to rezon 6401 North Kelly Avenue from SPD 1151.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Rieger, attorney for the applicant with address of 136 Thompson Drive in Norman, Oklahoma. It's a pleasure to be here today. This is basically just a revised spud. The spud was before you a couple of years ago. All of the underlying base regulations of C3 remain unchanged in that spud. The only thing before you is a request to add some additional uses so that we can advance some more possibilities on this site. We had a great meeting with staff just about a week ago to look deeper into what we had filed for, and we, we struck out some additional uses from that and clarified it a little further. So hopefully, we've got it right where we need to be. Staff has recommended approval, and we're not aware of any protest or have heard from anybody otherwise. Happy to answer any questions you have, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Sure. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. Do you have comments or concerns or questions?
Yeah, just a, a quick question. So among, what were the uses specifically that you all added?
Okay, so this, you're asking the specific uses we added?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That you didn't have already?
Somewhat of a lengthy list here. Community, community recreation uses, food and beverage retail, participant recreation and entertainment, childcare centers, retail sales and services general, communication services, custom manufacturing, and then a number of eating establishment, eating establishment ones. We did clarify that you cannot put a drive-through on the north side of a building, so no speakers on the north side. We added gasoline sales small, restricted, struck-out large, lodging accommodations, bed and breakfast, low-impact institutional neighborhood-related laundry services, senior independent living, repair services, consumer, payday or title loan agencies, and automotive and equipment sales and rentals, but struck out earth and heavy equipment, and said that that use can only be done on that corner lot. So that's very specific.
That's good.
And then we also added automotive and equipment storage, but that one also, Commissioner says, only on the corner lot where there's an existing building. And then we specifically say in bold language, notwithstanding foregoing, no bar, tavern, or marijuana dispensary shall be permitted on the site. So we tried to be very restrained and specific on what could be used and whatnot.
With participant recreation and entertainment, and forgive me for not knowing the code exactly, what kind of use, outdoor uses are we, are we talking about here, JJ? I'm, I'm concerned about the neighbors to the north and track one. That's, that's my issue.
Participant recreation uses are generally sports-type uses, outdoor.
We talking about amplified music? Are we talking about?
Yeah, I don't know if he'd really even need that here.
Okay. And then on the, on the drive-through window? I guess I'm wondering, because I, I'm just curious about this with the, with that use. I'm very concerned about the disruption that that could provide to the people in the north. Do you even need that use at all of the drive-through window? Is it possible for you all to eliminate that altogether?
We could consider it, Commissioner. We did try to, actually wrote in that no drive-through order windows shall be permitted along the north side of the building, so.
But if I can still hear it from the, from the south side?
I understand.
The disruption is still there.
We would consider that, Commissioner.
I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. I, I would, I mean, I would add to that. I think the 8,300.19 and 8,300.21 are fine because you've restricted them to track two, so there's no residents there. The drive-through order window I took issue with, drive-in I took issue with. Gasoline sales small I take issue with in this area. And then participant recreation and entertainment is, that's a non-starter, at least for me. I just can't go there, it's way too close to these properties. And then the only other one that I thought we should at least talk about is lodging accommodation, bed and breakfast. Just because this is such a small site, I, I don't know that I'm particularly bothered by it, but, you know, I, I mean, this, I'm glad that this corner is getting redeveloped. It's, it needs it, it's great for the area to see redevelopment here, and I, I think it's all encouraging. But the way that you've drawn out your site plan, too, these, these properties are really close to the back fence line, so the uses matter a lot to me. So I would be in favor of striking those use units I just read. Any other commissioners have questions or concerns on this one for the applicant? I do not have anybody signed up to speak on this, but I'm going to ask.
I have all those same concerns.
Okay. Good to know. Is there anybody who wants to be heard today on SPD 1362? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we, we would be agreeable to those strikes.
So that would be.
Participant recreation, gasoline small, restricted. You had a third one, I think.
Lodging accommodations.
Yes.
And then.
The drive-in?
Yeah, it'd be 8,300.36 and 8,300.34.
We could do that, Commissioner.
That would eliminate a lot of my concerns.
Okay.
Oh, one other thing, says your dumpsters are going to be 25 feet, which is the code.
Correct.
I'm very curious if you think you could get them 50 feet away from the north property line of track one?
I think it's possible. The site plan has basically been unchanged from when it was submitted previously, but we probably have the depth to do that. It was just looking at the site plan here, if you count the parking spaces back. I think we could probably do that because I, I think very likely that, that dumpster would be out in front of one of those buildings or mid-block, mid, mid-lot, I mean. So I think that's likely.
I just don't want them tucked up behind that person's fence there.
Okay.
So if we, if you can agree to 50 feet on the dumpster, which is in 4.2, that would be great.
I can do that, Commissioner.
Anything else, Commissioner Pennington?
I'm sorry, have we talked about, did we touch on the automotive and equipment sales and services? I don't, there's not any way that I can see that happening at this corner.
But it's already, there is auto repair just to the north, because it's only on track two. Just on track two, which is on the corner.
Repair, repair, I get. Sales and metals, you know, we, we tend to aggregate or congregate sales. If we start one here, it's like it's, you know, they tend to. I, I, I don't know. I, I don't see moving trucks, tractor-trailers, or storage trucks being sold out of this location.
I don't think there's enough room.
An odd, yeah.
If I could interject, Commissioners, I do think there's some opportunity on that corner lot only, and this would only be required on the corner lot where there is an adjacency. an adjacent city in the north that would probably be compatible with it. But we do think there's an opportunity for small truck rental and leasing on that site that we've had an infotour.
Looks like that's happening on the north.
Would it appease you, I think they have a very specific user is what it sounds like? If it says such as moving trucks, tractor-trailers, we could limit it to that so it's not automotive.
I think that's a good idea.
One of the points, Commissioners, too, is this, but there is a pretty mature tree line. I don't know if we can show that on that edge of that corner tract. And the S P U D. actually specifically says, you can see it right there a little bit, that S P U D. actually requires that mature tree line to be kept in place without harm. So there is a significant buffer, as you can see on the west side of track two, that we think is pretty helpful in that regard.
Yeah. I'm with Commissioner Pennington. I'm not bothered by the use in track two, but I understand Commissioner Powers' point, and the track to the north of that's going to come in and ask for auto sales. And so if we can change that language from such as to specifically limited to, you know, moving trucks, tractor-trailers, storage trucks, at least that limits what kind of auto sales can go on there.
I think we can do that.
Okay. Commissioner Pennington, I think if there's no further discussion, we can take a motion.
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Clare.
Just a point of clarification on the dumpsters. It's a very tight site. Cindy, can you go back to the Exhibit B site plan for track one? Thank you. Just for reference, that 50-foot is going to put your dumpsters at the accessible space aisles or south of that.
Okay. So if they want to develop it in that manner, they would have to locate dumpsters on track two, which, I'll be honest with you, I'd probably be in favor of requiring that, just because it ensures that they can use the site, but there's no trash. I just don't, nobody wants a dumpster on their fence.
Totally understood. I think there's some opportunities mid-lot, perhaps on the west-east side, that you could do that without.
Yeah, this is just a layout. This means nothing. So as long as you know what he's telling you, which is that you're about at those accessible spaces to put a dumpster, you do you.
But I think we can still do that on this lot. We appreciate that concern.
I just wanted everybody to have all the facts.
Understood.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval to City Council of S P U D. 1362 with the following technical evaluations. First, that Section 4.2 regarding dumpsters be amended to require a minimum of 50 feet from any residential district. Two, that we eliminate the following use units that are allowed on the site, 8300.56, 8300.34, 8300.36, 8300.47, 8300.49. Finally, T E 3, that we amend 8300, use unit 8300.19, that it be, that the auto, automotive and equipment sales be limited to moving trucks, tractor-trailers, and storage trucks.
One point of clarification, in your recitation of the use units we're deleting, you used 8300.47. I think you meant 8300.46, which would be gasoline sales small, restricted?
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. to recommend approval to City Council on S P U D. 1362, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project. Next item is item 24.
This is case C 7387, preliminary plat of Sanabria, and this is located west of South Pennsylvania Avenue and south of southwest 149th Street.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicant. So this is a, we had a zoning case before you a few weeks back for the tract south of 164th Street, which was acquired by the developer, and this is the preliminary plat combining both properties together. As you can see, we're just east of the south-side wastewater treatment plant for the city of Oklahoma City. We have a major tributary to the Canadian River along our west and northwest property areas, which is, obviously restricts our development in those areas. And I say all that to say that we agree with all the T E technical evaluations that have been suggested by the staff, and one includes a variance regarding the stub to the quarter sections to our north and west. Because of the treatment plant and the river, it's practically impossible to have a stub going west and north. And with that, we'd ask for your approval.
So the stub request, I think, is just to the south, was my understanding. But I'm in agreement with you that a connection to the west, given what's there, makes no sense.
Well, we do provide one to the south, so.
You are providing one. So that's what I thought. And, but the staff report tells us you need one to the south, but you've got one in your drawing, so that's what I wanted to confirm.
Right. We do.
What is that street right there where the connection is, the north-south street?
I can't read it.
I can't either.
Sanabria Drive.
Are you making that up?
Sanangria.
Sanabria.
Are you making that up?
Yeah.
Okay. You said it so fast, I thought, you know. Okay. So Sanabria Drive is where the connection is. So it's there. So my question to staff is, then, do we don't really need the?
Various requests for the west.
For the west?
It should be.
Okay. All right. That's fine. Okay. Commissioner Hinkle, this is your ward. They do need the variance. Any questions or comments for the applicant? I do not have anybody signed up to speak, just so you know.
No, this area's been ripe for this for years, so I'm willing to make a motion if we're ready.
Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I think we are.
So I'll move approval of variance, Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of C 7387.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the variance. Please cast your votes. Or I need a second from Commissioner Privet. Thank you. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And the variance is approved. We need a motion on the item.
So I'll move approval of preliminary plat C-7387 with the five technical evaluations, six technical evaluations.
Okay. I have a motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey to approve the preliminary plat C 7387. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that preliminary plat is approved. Thank you. Item 25 has been deferred to January 13th. So next item on our agenda is item 26.
This is case number C 7389, final plat of Greenbrier at Surry Hills, located north of West Hepner Road and east of Piedmont Road.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering for the applicant. I have reviewed and do agree with the T Es and would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. This is Commissioner Clare's ward. I don't have any questions here. Do you, Commissioner Clare?
I do not.
Okay. I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this. C 7389, hearing nobody. There's no discussion from your commissioners. I think we can take a motion on the final plat.
I'll move approval, final plat, C 7389.
I have a motion to approve the final plat. I'll take the second on Prime Gov.
T E's.
Subject to the technical evaluations.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Privet. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. He is absent. And that item, that final plat is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Next item on our agenda is item 27. Mr. Butler?
Yes, this is P U D. 1867, application to rezone 659 First American Boulevard from R1 and I3 to P U D. 1867. This is the P U D. for land around the First Americans Museum. Staff has continued to work with the applicant, Representative Johnson and Associates. Since the staff report was published, and should the commission desire, staff's prepared to provide an update, and also the applicant is here as well.
Let the applicant lead us off here.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicant, as well as representative of the applicant Chad Claiborne and Jim Couch. Also here with me is Mark Zizou, who made part of the presentation. Cindy, could you go to our presentation? So as Mr. Butler mentioned, we have continued to work with Jeff and his staff throughout, since last Thursday, basically, and we think we have added a lot of detailed information that we did not have the opportunity to add before the S R O D D. meeting. And I think once we get through this presentation, you'll understand the complexity of this project and our desire to move forward. One thing that needs to be pointed out, I think, as part, as you read through the history on this, is that when the museum took a hiatus and sat stalemate for a number of years, it was the intent and the agreement with the city of Oklahoma City, with the help of the Chickasaws, to basically rescue this project from the state and raise the money to complete the actual museum. The intent from that agreement has always been that the land around it would help generate the taxes and the revenues to help support the museum from now on. So that's a very important part of how this develops and why it needs to develop with the intensity we have it. So as I mentioned in our previous discussions, we, this project, we have vetted with all the departments that you see listed here. We've met on numerous occasions with the utility department. We've talked about the infrastructure that is there and how we're going to extend it, what's going to be public, what's going to be private, the future of additional water source to the property. All those discussions are in process, and we are preparing detailed plans to submit on behalf of the project. We've met with the Parks Department. We've talked through the trail. We've worked with Embark on the River Cruise Port that's going to be installed as part of this. There was a grant that was issued for the, to Embark for the River Cruise Port, and as part of that grant money, there's additional fees that will be included in this project to help work the trail in and around that docking area. And then as it goes to the west half of this first phase, the MAPS III trails will pick up and continue off to the west. The MAPS III trails on the north side of the river have been advertised and bid. There is also, Parks Department advises there are projects underway to improve the Eastern Avenue Bridge or the First American Boulevard Bridge to make it safer for cyclists. We are coordinating our construction with the Parks Department and their ramp that takes you from under the, from the river level under the bridge up to eastern level. Public Works, we've dealt with them, and recently, as recent as yesterday, got the approval for the location of the new signal that's been funded to go with our new drive that's proposed as, that's proposed as part of this. So the project comes with a lot of hair on it. There was over 200 oil and gas easements on this property that we are continuing to work with. We have narrowed it down to four actual users that are on the property, and so we, as you will see, we are working in unison with those pipelines to make sure that they have access, and then we can develop our property. So this is the site with the topo. I will point out that both west and east of the existing museum, which is raised above the street level at First American Boulevard, some nearly 20 feet, we are in the 100-year floodplain. So there's a lot of fill that'll have to be taken place on the site, and we're coordinating that with another local project to bring the dirt in. Excellent. And so, as you can imagine, the, as with the agreement that I mentioned with the city, we're working very closely with the museum, and we'll be having continuous meetings with them to discuss how the project proceeds, how we coordinate access to the existing museum during construction, and, but they're part of the team, we're part of their team. We've got four architects involved on this project, so we are constantly working between all the architects to make sure that everything is cohesive and works well with the museum design. And so at this point, I'm going to let Mark go through the details of the P U D.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizou with Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Thank you all. So one of the major points of this project is the First Americans Museum. So this site plan that's been under development really for the past two years was done so with noting the importance of the First American Museum. And so that's really the center point of this project. We've also paid respect to the equinox and summer solstice. That was part of the original master plan some 20 years ago for this project. We believe that the project's also properly activating the river with trails, connection points, and the Devon River Cruise landing. There'll be heavy landscaping and artwork proposed, which will shield surface parking lots and parking garages from the river and public streets. And then ultimately, this is a project that's going to have a high level of interaction between the site and its guests through the uses and the designs. Cindy, if you can go to the. So if we look at Phase 1 and 2, I think initially, there was a comment made that the site was very internal. And while a portion of this is a resort that is internally facing, our buildings on the north are designed in such a way that there's a heavy amount of interaction between the river and the site. Also, we will have pedestrian connections to First Americans Boulevard, bringing people in. So there will be a lot of thought put into those connection points so that the development is welcoming from anyone on the river. And here's that pedestrian and cycle movement. A portion of this is noted in the verbiage of the P U D. The pedestrian connection will be made out to First Americans Boulevard and will circulate throughout the property and give access to the First Americans Museum. And there are two key connection points on the north side that will be wide openings that will allow for that interaction between the river and the actual development. This is a rendering looking toward downtown of the project with the First Americans Museum on the left and the Okana Hotel on, toward the right side of the screen. There will be a lagoon, which would be a resort-style swimming pool with a zero beach entry design, and you see ancillary buildings around the project. In between the hotel and the First Americans Museum, there's going to be commercial uses and a native marketplace for the selling of goods. Those will all be open to the public, and again, have access both pedestrian and vehicular, if you go to the next one. This is the view from the river. You can see on the right side, the Devon River Cruise drop-off that Tim had just mentioned, a new plaza, and then you can see that interaction between those buildings, that there are entry points on what are the north side of those buildings to encourage that interaction and entrance between the development and the river. So in no way do we believe that this building is turning its back toward the river. This is the internal drop-off location for the hotel. This would be for emergency access turnaround and potentially public transportation if that was to enter the site. This would be an area that they could turn around on. And I'm just going to run through, I think there's, you know, 35 to 40 images in the P U D. We're not going to go through all of them, but I'm just going to highlight a few of them. And as you can see, there's canopy structures. A lot of this is being done in such a way that there's a high level of design and architecture being utilized throughout the site planning and the development. There will also be a lot of stone and earth materials, which you would see represented in the First Americans Museum. We go to the next one. This is the parking garage. You can see those large art panels, and then as well as a significant amount of landscaping and birmingham. That's one of the pieces we've continued to work with staff on, were what the screening requirements would be, if you go to the next slide. This is looking back for the First American Museum. You can see, again, there are clean views and lines toward the museum from inside the development. If you go to the next one. This would be a section of the street in between our commercial areas. Again, we have a sign package at the end that will kind of show an example of, but it's a very pedestrian-friendly development. Here, again, you may see texture changes in pavement and concrete that really note where pedestrians are supposed to be to create a safe, walkable environment. Next slide. Again, this is just a view looking back at the museum to note that a lot of the viewpoints from here are purposeful so that you can look back toward the museum. And then we'll stop here just for a second. All of the buildings are being designed in such a way that there, there will be native artists that will be commissioned to paint or do some sort of art display on various sides of the building. So the purpose of this development is to be very interactive. So when you walk around, you're constantly being exposed to different architectural and artistic impressions. Next slide. And here's the sign package, which is noted in the regulations. You can see that there will be larger project identification signs out toward First Americans Boulevard, and then various signs throughout the development. It's a little unique in that there are not other, what we would typically consider sensitive borders in terms of residential and other uses. Our sensitive border is the river, and we've worked very hard to protect that portion of it with staff. And so we believe the sign package and what's noted is appropriate for this development. The next one. Through, over the last week, what we've worked with the staff, with staff, is to incorporate a lot of the intent and the guidelines into this P U D., because ultimately, our request is to remove it from the scenic river overlay. It's our understanding that staff is now comfortable with the guidelines and the regulations that we've put that we've put into the PUD to support that request. If you go to the next slide. Again, these are just more images, I think, that show that this is a high-quality development and really are meeting the intent of what a design overlay would do for this property. Next slide, next slide. So, one more, Cindy. Thank you. So, and ultimately, what we're asking for is a recommendation of approval on this, on this PUD to remove it from the overlay, but we do not think that there's any part of this project that doesn't meet the intent and those guidelines. And I'll just reiterate, over the last week, we have worked significantly with staff to incorporate any of the concerns that they had. And so it's our understanding now that they're supportive of the project and would recommend approval. There are two TEs that at this point, we would ask that they would be struck and we would ask that a recommendation be made to City Council, that the PUD dated December 7th, 2021, be moved forward. This is a PUD document that was shared with you all this week and has been submitted to staff.
That's what you remitted to us via email, correct?
That is correct. And along with that, and I'll pass these out just for the record, are a list of changes and red lines that accompany the PUD.
And if I understand that those changes in red lines are designed to incorporate a good bit of the guidelines from the scenic river overlay into the PUD, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. While they circulate around, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward, which actually caught me a little by surprise, to be honest with you.
Really?
Yeah, I was thinking south of it. Anyway, but, opening comments or questions from you?
Yeah, could we hear, Jeff, would you mind addressing your concerns, staff's concerns generally about the scenic river issues, how you feel about these amendments? Just kind of share, talk about that.
Absolutely, thank you. Actually, Sarah, if you'd like to just kind of give us a little bit of backstory and then whatever Sarah doesn't cover, Katie Friedle's also here. If you have questions about SRODD, but generally what Mark said is, what Mark said is accurate, we're in support.
Sure. So, obviously, the land around the museum needs to be rezoned because it's zoned R1 and I-3 now, and then it's in this design overlay. The zoning code states that when you have a PUD that's in an overlay, that you really should be encouraged to stay in that overlay and go through the design process. However, since the PUD was submitted, it's actually never, they've been requesting to not follow the design review process since submittal. So we, staff's been working very closely since submittal to try to incorporate as much as we could from those regulations and guidelines into the PUD. Last Thursday, the Riverfront Design Review Committee, who oversees the SRODD, made a recommendation that this stay in the scenic river. So your TE in the staff report is reflective of their recommendation. Then, after Friday, after the staff report was published, we have continued to work with the applicant to incorporate as much as they're willing to incorporate into the, into the PUD. So, we think we're at a point right now where, I mean, everybody's very excited about the project. They've replaced the, the design reviews, review with our director's review for future building permits. And you'll see any new development on the west side again as a specific plan. Does that answer your questions?
I'll just add, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'll just add one thing, and I think we're in agreement with this. There is one, a little bit of wording change we'd like to make on the MDS. It's under Section 9.18, General Design and Development Guidelines. It says in addition to, so that first underlying portion says, "In addition to the guidelines set forth in Chapter 59, the following guidelines may be applicable, et cetera." We would like to change that to say, the following guidelines apply at the time of building permit for Phases One and Two or a specific plan.
Are you familiar with that request, I'm assuming, and comfortable with that language change?
And we agree with it.
Okay.
Wait, so we're just saying that the following guidelines are applicable? Okay.
Yeah. It just says, "The following guidelines apply."
Yeah.
Just to make it clear, there was a little bit of wording, wordsmithing going on last minute, so.
There's some shells in there.
Other questions or comments from you?
Sure, one more. I know, my understanding, and I've met with the applicant a couple of times about this, my understanding is that you all have had conversations with Councilwoman Nice. She's had some concerns. Could you talk to us a little bit about addressing those concerns? I'm assuming you have.
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Johnson address this.
Yeah, Chad and I met with Councilwoman Nice probably a month and a half or two months ago. The project was early. It was before we actually made the application to staff. We went through what we were proposing and as part of her concern or request, it had to do mostly with the need for public transportation for the potential workforce here. There will be, when it's fully developed, there will be up to 400 jobs. She has an interest in both the access to this project as well as the high school to our south, I can't remember the name of it.
Corrigan.
And so we have met with Embark and the Director of Embark has agreed that he, there is a need here and with the timing that we're giving them, because this project will take a minimum of two years to develop this first phase, that he will begin to start understanding how he can route this and make a better circulation through this area and actually serve the site. That conversation was had a week before last.
Thanks, Tim.
Hey, Tim, just for our collective benefit here, help us understand, I mean, what is the, what is the need to try to incorporate this in and avoid the scenic river overlay for this project? Help us understand that.
Well, it's, as you can see by the site plan, it's complicated. It's a complicated project. We'll have at least 15 building permits coming at one time. And with the regulations, the way they are written, if we make a substantial change or we change the facade of a building from one material to another, it would require, first of all, it would require CAA for each building permit. Second, it would require us, for any major change like that, to come back and seek, even if it's administrative changes, we would go through Katie's staff. If we make the submittal date on time, it's a minimum three-week turnaround because of the protest time that's added to the end of the review by the staff. So, working as fast as they can, based on the regulations, it's a, it's a fairly long turnaround for a quick decision.
Just to change one thing, or?
Well, it would be, it could be worded such that we could, it would minimize it to major things, but on a project this size, there will be change.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from commissioners on this?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. So, Scenic River Overlay District met Thursday. They were opposed to removing themselves from the process. There was additional conversations on Friday that seems like planning staff is, has there been any communication since the Thursday meeting with the Scenic River Lay Overlay District? And are they on board now, or?
No. Katie Friedle, I'm the Division Manager for Current Planning and Urban Design and oversee the Scenic River Overlay District Committee and Staff. The Riverfront Design Committee hasn't had any additional communication since that meeting on Thursday.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, they sent us a recommendation, right? So we have their official word on their thought, so. Anybody else have comments on this? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Powers.
I have one, just a little thing. I had specifically asked for some clarification on the projections under 9.10.4. And to your credit, I think you tried to answer my concern, and now I'm going to, you know, kibbitz about it a little bit. But where it says "internal" shall mean that no projection, can we strike the first part of that and just go with the capital N on "no projection" is to be, is located on the north or will be, shall be located on the north or east besides? I don't, I don't necessarily want to make that the sole and complete definition of what internal means. I don't know whether it would have any other meaning or not, but if we could just go with the "no projection" on the north and east, I'm good.
And we can agree to that. The intent is to do internal, as we discussed.
And I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Okay. What I'll say is, and I don't normally, I mean, I could not be more supportive personally of this project. I could not be more supportive, understanding the complexity of the project, the amount of work that would go into that, the amount of headache and time and delay and cost to come at a project of this size at $300 million and make a change to a building material and have to go through an administrative process to make that change. I don't think that in any way, my support of this project means that I don't support the scenic river overlay or don't believe that it has efficacy in its work. What I do believe is that anybody from Ray Ackerman to whomever else has been involved in creating the river, if they had ever dreamt that a project like this would be possible for Oklahoma City, it would have been much easier to get the funding, a much shorter timeframe to get it done, to build this river. This is a massive project that is going to generate millions of dollars in taxes, both sales and property. This is not sovereign land, correct? This is, so, we're talking about property taxes for that school Tim didn't know the name of. We're talking about sales taxes for the city. We're talking about jobs and income and, I mean, this is exciting. And while I'm very respectful of the work that the Scenic River Lay does, the SRODD does, and the work that all the people do that are on committees and commissions, to me, if we've gotten to the point where we feel comfortable that those guidelines have been respected enough, we should move this thing forward and we should do it quick. So, I couldn't be more supportive. I don't, it sounds like you're very supportive of the project, strongly in support of the project.
And I would add to that, to their credit, they have provided us with a list of what they would want to see. I do understand that they would want to retain control over the process, I get that. But I think it's also just abundantly clear
Yeah.
From the size and scope of a project like this, that it would be incredibly cumbersome if every change, even, even every major change, let's say, you know, had to go through that process. I think, you know, they've provided us with the framework. The applicant has, you know, incorporated it into their application. I'm like you, I don't want this to be in any way, shape, or form interpreted as, you know, an indication that we, you know, are stepping into somebody else's turf or that we don't respect the work they do or any of that. Maybe at some point in the future, we should think systemically about whether there are better ways to deal with gigantic projects like this, but they don't come along every day, so.
For every $300 million project that comes along that has 400 employees and millions of dollars in impact on an annualized basis, I welcome the chance to discuss whether it's appropriate to remove it from any overlay that we have with a recommendation from us to City Council that it proceeds so that it can actually get completed. That's how I feel about it.
And doesn't take 27 years.
And doesn't take 27 years to do it. Yeah, it's, the intent of the overlay was to protect the river so that developments like this could come. That's my belief. And here we go, it's here. So, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
I completely agree. And I just want to say, I think it shows, the fact that they've gone to this extent shows the power and influence of the scenic river, you know, of that, of the group, of the board. Because we've now, we forced them to have to adhere to some much more strict standards than I'm sure they would really want to. And so I think, I think it's excellent. Couldn't agree more with the chairman's comments. I'm in total support, very excited to see this thing happen. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1867 with the following changes, that we eliminate Technical Evaluation I and that we incorporate the red line changes summary as outlined in the record. And we also need to make some changes, excuse me, we need to make some changes, amendments to that red line.
There was only, there were two changes.
Two changes.
Two small changes, yeah.
One in 9.10.4.
Correct.
We want to, instead of replacing the phrasing of "internal projection," instead we want to disallow any projection to the north and east. Then, in Section 9.18, we want to change the following sentence. "In addition to the guidelines set forth in Chapter 59, the following guidelines are applicable at the time of building permit for Phases One and Two or a specific plan."
Minor correction to that.
Please.
"In addition to the guidelines set forth in Chapter 59, the following guidelines at the time of building permit for Phase One and Two or of a specific plan." So there's no "are."
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
The following guidelines apply.
The following guidelines apply
At the time.
At the time of building permit for Phases One and Two or a specific plan.
That was three days of discussion, so. Want to make sure we get it right.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council, subject to the amended technical evaluations that have been read into the record. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner La Forge, so please cast your votes when And that item is recommended to City Council for approval unanimously, and we appreciate it and we look forward to the project.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on it. Next item on today's agenda is Item 28.
This is PUD 1860, Application to Rezone 9600 Northeast 150th Street from PUD 1323.
Charles Allen, Allen Engineering, 1601 Southwest 89th Street. Dan Minders, the owner of the property and developer is also here this afternoon. This property, or this project was continued from our last meeting to discuss water service to the property. Since then, we've learned that the water's not really available, and I think Dustin Seagrave can probably speak to that better than I can.
Yes, I just want to advise the board that on the staff report, I forgot to correct the staff report to say that water is not available. And currently in the staff report, it says there's a 12-inch line that they connect to. I just want to confirm and let you know that we are in support of going with well systems as they propose.
So just kind of to summarize, this is approximately 92 acres. We've drawn in 92 three-quarter acre sized lots. It would be a private development, concrete roads, gated community. It would be well and septic, just like Justin, Dustin just said. We're in agreement, I guess, to get to the TEs, the specific density would be 92 lots. We would modify the base zoning to RA with a couple changes. We agree with all the setbacks, but as far as the coverage, the development to the east, the falls, is 50%. We'd like the same 50% coverage. They also had an administrative amendment to their PUD to allow in-ground swimming pools not to be considered as structures and subject to the same setbacks. So, I guess if we need to discuss that or if we want to handle that administratively. And then, Item TE Number Three would be identifying tree preservation on the final plat.
Just so we're clear, the maximum lots allowed in TE One would be 92 lots.
Correct.
The base zoning would be RA.
Correct.
Modified to limit the lot coverage to 50%. Can you say the swimming pool issue one more time? I don't know that I've heard that before.
Well, I guess for the falls, they, Tim Johnson, they submitted a, an administrative amendment because technically, an in-ground pool is considered a structure so that they were subject to the same setbacks. In our situation, we've got a 25-foot setback, side yard setback, for example, that with the tree preservation, it may be necessary that that pool might be within 10 feet of the property line. Other, but under this current code, it's considered a structure, it'd only be able to be within 25 feet. So there's, I think the falls was within five feet. I mean, we'd be probably within 10 feet at the most.
So the request is to, in-ground swimming pools basically just don't count as a structure for the purposes of the setback?
Yeah.
Or it's that the setbacks will be different for in-ground swimming pools?
I think they would be different for an in-ground pool. Obviously, we, we don't want to build right on the property line.
Yeah.
So I would say 10 feet, within 10 feet of the side and rear, rear yard setbacks.
Is what you're actually asking, that the administrative approval that was previously given on the issue of swimming pools for the property be kept in place?
I guess taking that away from the staff and letting you guys understand that.
Jeff?
That what we're talking about.
What do you think? Is there something that you guys?
I think the best thing to do would just be to change the setback for swimming pools. I think the best thing to do would just be to change the setback for swimming pools and make it specific, five or 10 feet for in-ground pools.
Do you all see a problem with that, JJ? Good with that?
No, the fact that they're below grade, they're not really a building, but technically they're a structure, so. And we've seen several variances at the Board of Adjustment for...
Yeah.
You'd be good with 10, 10 feet? Okay. I think that's all I have. I'm in support generally. I mean, we, number of changes to the TEs, so I don't, I don't have any further questions.
I do not have anybody signed up. I do not have anybody signed up on this item. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on PUD 1860? And forgive me for, Mr. Allen, for having to excuse myself for a moment. If there's not, there's nobody here, so unless there's further comments, if you've got it, then I think we're ready.
I'm ready. Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1860 with the following changes to technical evaluations, that TE1 be amended to limit the maximum number of lots to 92 lots, that TE2 be limited, create the base zone of RA, and that lot coverages be limited to 50% therein. Finally, adding TE4, that would require a 10-foot setback for any in-ground swimming pools.
Agreement?
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1860, subject to the technical evaluations as amended by Commissioner Pennington and read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda today is item 29.
This is SPOD 1364, application to rezone 5725 South Harvey Court from R4.
Applicant present?
Aye. My name is Cynthia Jimenez, 601 Southwest 12th Street, and I'm here supporting and I'm her friend and helping with translation and communication as well. So, last time we were here, we were recommended to get with staff and make some corrections and we've been in contact with them, so they gave us the information that the committee, the commission suggested that instead of being considered a C3, direct C3 relocated or reconsidered, it would be, it would be better, it would be SPOD. So, we were okay with that, with that recommendation, and we were, we'll do whatever it takes to accommodate to the, to the recommendation. I don't know, do you want me to go over the considerations they made?
If there's, I mean, we have the report in front of us that you've, you've provided to staff, so we have that. If there's anything specifically you want us to be aware of, you can certainly tell us that. We do have a number of people that are signing up to speak as well, so it might make some sense for us to hear from them, but certainly I want to hear anything you want to share.
We are okay with everything on the spot.
Okay.
SPOD.
Okay. Commissioner Privet, this is your word. Do you have questions for the applicant?
Not currently, but I would like to hear from the public.
Okay. We've got a number of folks that wanted to be heard on this one, so we'll start out. John Pettis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the planning commission and John Pettis, 228, Robert S. Care here on behalf of the Refreshing Church located as 5716 Harvey Avenue. And our position is still the same, and our position is that this particular development is not compatible with the surrounding area. The church represents the vast majority of the R4 vacant land. As you can tell, this particular site, to the left of it is zone R4, to the right of it is zone R4. We do recognize that to the south of the property, there is a shopping center, but again, we do believe that this particular proposed development is not compatible to the surrounding areas. We do have further, some issues with the language in the SPOD. The SPOD talks about the language and the SPOD does talk about that cars will not be allowed to be stored, but cars can be on the premises long as they are waiting to be repaired. That particular language is very vague, and more so of, a car can wait several days, if not months, to be repaired. So, we do have issues with that language and also the hours of operation. Again, there is a compatibility issue here, and so I do speak on behalf of the rest of the protesters.
Can we hear exactly, John, what, if we were to make changes on the language regarding the cars awaiting being serviced, do you have any suggestions on that? Are you suggesting that we, or you're just, the answer is just don't allow the use? Is that...
Well, our first view is don't allow the use because of it's not compatible with the surrounding R4 property. But however, if you all do approve this, we ask that the cars would not be, if they're not being physically worked on, that they would not be considered as waiting to be repaired, if that makes sense. The language waiting to be prepared leaves it very, very vague.
And then, on the hours of operation, suggestions, preferences?
Preferences, between the hours of eight to five. But again, the, to us, the SPOD is very, very vague. Now, according to the application, at least what's online, that Mark Grobs is the representative. We have not had any conversations with him. We see that he is not in here, so we are kind of left in confusion. Is he representing this or, or is this, he just submitted on behalf of the applicant?
I don't know that he, is he involved?
I think he's just consulting on the project.
He was just, okay. So, but again, our position is the, number one, the compatibility issue. We feel very strongly if this particular proposed development was along 59th Street or Walker, but again, it is surrounded by R4 to the left, to the right, and to the north of.
And just so we're clear, the church is the one, it's directly across the street. You all own all the R4 sort of in that, that...
That is, that is correct. The church owns approximately 11 acres. 11 acres.
Okay. Is there any way for us to make this work?
Um...
Is screening something?
Just one moment. No.
Okay. It's all my questions. All right. Let's hear from Sandra Miller. Just kidding, we won't hear from Sandra Miller. Let's hear from Ms. Stewart. Is Ms. Stewart here?
They gave their, all of their time to me.
Oh, they did? Okay. Well, I just, I don't know who they, they are, so I'm just trying to make sure. I'm just going to run through them. Michael Johnson. Are you also giving your time to Mr. Pettis, sir? Okay. And then, Blanche Washington. Fair enough. Appreciate you all being here, by the way. Elizabeth Williams?
Had to leave.
Okay. All right. Well, that's everybody. Is there anybody else who would like us to hear something about SPOD 1364? Okay. Commissioner Privet? Thoughts?
I want to talk about screening. What kind of screening we got?
Is, would the applicant mind coming back up for us? Go ahead and ask your question again.
Screening, what do you plan on to screen the edge of your property from?
Fence, anything, trees?
It, it says no less than a six-foot or no greater than an eight-foot high fence or wall.
Does it see through or, you know?
Yeah, where it's adjacent residential, you said wall shall be constructed of stucco, brick, stone, wood, or any combination thereof, shall be solid and opaque. So, you have to put, you'd have to put sight-proof screening all the way around the site. You know that.
Definitely.
Yeah. All right.
I have a question. Do you access this from the south or from the east? Is the building going to be oriented to face the south or is the building going to face the east to where you...
It has to be the east because the, the south side is actually the private property it looks like.
Private property of the parking lot.
Of the shopping center. Mm-hmm. Other questions for the applicants?
I just want to think maybe, talking about this on storage units, but...
Thank you. Talk about this on storage units, but maybe, you know, a combination of sight-proof screening and then, according to the sketch provided, it's just a sketch, but the overhead doors face south. They don't face Harvey Court.
Right.
That gives me a little bit better feel between, we've got opaque screening across the front, overhead doors.
We could require that.
Yes. That's what, that's what I'm saying is...
We could stipulate that requirement.
Yeah.
Do you all own the property today? Do you own the property?
Yeah, they own, they own the property.
He is the legal owner of the property right now.
Correct.
I have a question about the store, huh, storing of cars. Page nine of 10 of the staff report I'm looking at, it says, "The application was originally submitted as a C3, now it's a SPOD. This is the conditions of the use require vehicles awaiting repair to be screened, that no vehicle be stored on the property more than 10 working days." Is that right? Is that applicable? So, it's more clear on the amount of time that the cars can be there?
Are you in agreement with that, that cars cannot be stored outside of the property for more than 10 days?
Yes.
And tires have to be stored inside and can only be displayed for sale during certain hours, which we've talked about hours of operation, that would be the certain hours. I think, I think eight to five is probably a little aggressive, but...
So, let me go back to my questions. I was wondering, is, with that saying that that is the condition of use is this 10-day limit, do they have something in their application that broadens that to be unlimited as long as it's waiting repair, or does this 10-day limit still apply?
That's a, that's a good question. I mean, I, is staff clear about what that, okay, Sarah's nodding yes, but JJ's going to come talk.
The auto, auto repair use is a conditional use in C3, so those conditions would go along with it.
Okay. So, it would be clearer than 10 days now for the applicant's benefit. I'm a little concerned. That seems a little restrictive this day and age with supplies. Somebody brings their car in, you look at it, they order parts, and they're not going to get parts for two weeks and then it's going to take a week. So, I want more clarity to the point of the protester, but 10 days...
Seems, it's, it seems very restrictive. I agree with you.
Yeah.
But the cars are also screened. So, you can't even see the cars.
Right. So, it seems like a screening and broaden it up beyond 10. If 10 days is going to apply to them, I, I wouldn't have asked them to limit it to 10 days because that's too strict, but if that's what by default applies, whether instead we consider...
Oh, you're saying, is that what the, yeah, I don't think that's a code issue. I think they've, they've included that language as a way to try to work with the people that are opposing the project.
Is that right? I thought it was, if I was reading this right, I thought it was the condition for C3 or that carries is the one that put the 10 days. Does it, 10 days come from our own rules or what they offered?
The 10 days is code.
Oh, it is? What is that? Like, what's the...
For any, for any like, kind of...
Yes, in C3, for auto repair.
Okay. I'm not aware of that. What's the...
It's somewhere else in the code. It's a conditional, auto repair is a conditional use in C3, and that's one of the conditions.
And that conditional use is being incorporated because the use unit's being incorporated?
Yes.
Okay. So, we don't have to add that language?
And it's a C3 base.
Got it. Okay.
We don't have to add the language, but 10 days would apply, and now the question is whether we even go the other way and give them, make an exception to the conditional use to allow longer, if we can even do that? Maybe just leave it at 10 days.
I mean, here's the deal, we're going to talk about this later anyway, but this is like an enforcement problem to some extent, too. I mean, I think the intent is there.
Cars there for years.
I think for us, it's really about whether or not, I think we can, I will say, I'm trying really hard to try to figure out how to make this work, because this is a very strange property, just because it is on the backside of this, you know, kind of large retail property. The land to the east that is going to be visible to this is vacant presently. The land to the north, I remember the last time they came in, there were photos presented of that site. They, people thought that was the cited issue. It's not. It looks to me that that site is, based on our map, it is zoned residentially, but it is certainly not being used that way. So, I, I mean, I'm really torn. They've put the building on the north side of the lot to face it to the, to the shopping center. That's where the parking is open to. It's going to be screened to the west. I don't believe a representative from this, what is denoted on our exhibit as a skilled long-term care facility is here. If somebody represents that facility, I'd certainly love to hear that. I'm kind of leaning generally in favor of this. Curious if there's...
I'm the same. I'm looking for, you know, an excuse to...
I'd like to just have a point of clarification here with respect to the screening. It indicates in the staff report that screening is required where it is adjacent to any residential use. So, as I read that and looking at the sketch that they have submitted, that would not include the east property line along Harvey Court. You know, I know there are issues with respect to security on sites like this, but I, it would help me get there on this if there were screening on that east property line as well.
Is, do you, is that something that you all could agree to, is to screen?
Screen all the way around it.
Sure.
It'd be an entirely fenced site. You understand that?
Yeah.
Well, you open to the south.
Right. Sure. Yeah. But, okay. All right. Other, other thoughts on this or other comments? I think we need to see where we are.
Is there a time restriction in there? Eight to five, it doesn't work. People drop their car off at seven and can't get it to pick it up till six.
That's really restrictive. It's too restrictive.
It don't work.
Seven to seven or something, it seems more reasonable to me. But, do you all have an opinion on that, hours of operation?
Seven to seven, sounds okay, but we'll abide to what the regulations you guys come up with about that also.
Seven to seven. I think that seems reasonable. Other comments or concerns from commissioners on this? You can ask a question.
Would you guys be willing to limit the operations from Monday through Saturday and not open on Sunday?
Not open to the public.
Right. Not open to the public on Sunday, and that way you don't conflict with the church service.
Okay.
He says it's okay. We'll agree to that.
Okay.
Commissioner Privet?
Yeah.
Chair show.
All right. I'm going to make a motion. Move to approve SPOD 1364, subject to these new TE, TE1, screen all of the site except for the south. Screening be required, sight-proof. Hours of operation will be seven to seven and not open on Sunday, TE2.
Okay. I have a motion, recommend approval to city council on SPOD 1364, subject to the technical evaluations, is read into the record by Commissioner Privet. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast.
She's on. She's the...
Okay. I voted. My old green box is up.
Yellow. I think it's you. Here, reboot that thing over there.
We need a voice vote?
Yeah. Time to go home.
All right. Let's, let's keep the party rolling. Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffey?
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We'll count Commissioner La Forge as absent for this vote. All votes have been cast. Technology will not defeat us. That item is recommended for approval. Thank you very much. Thank you all, for everyone who came down today. Mr. Pettis and the rest of you, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. No, it's not your fault. We all had to voice vote. Technical glitch. Next item on our agenda today is item 30. Next item on our agenda today is item 30.
Item 30 is SPOD 1365, application to rezone 10901 Northwestern from R1 to SPOD 1365.
Hello, my name is Juan Carapia, and I'm with the 10901 Northwestern.
Okay.
And we'd like to apply for a SPUD.
Okay, we've got your application. Is there anything specifically you want us to know?
So you probably will remember this came to us as a straight zoning request.
Yep.
The intended use is for a banquet hall and event center. That gets everybody's, you know, antenna up. So we continued that case to decide whether we would submit this request as an SPOD instead, which they readily agreed to do. We met on the site, we walked it. It's a huge site and probably will be developed for other things besides this banquet hall and event center. And Mr. Carapia has some very specific ideas about what he wants to do with the property, and so that made it very easy to craft an SPOD. Staff was kind enough to help us actually package that, but there are a few things that didn't find their way into the master design statement, I guess, and certainly not into the staff report. So what you need to know is, they've agreed to limitation of 120 square feet for their sign limitation, with the understanding that it can be a multiple user sign if they so choose. They're going to leave a 25-foot open space along the west property line, so that buffer area between them and the apartment complex to the west. There is a fairly dense tree coverage in that space, and they're going to preserve as much of that tree line as they possibly can. Based on the fact that there is a, at least six, I think it's probably more like seven or even eight-foot concrete wall along the east property line of the apartment complex, that's definitely not going anywhere. I don't see any point in them putting up any kind of site proof fencing over there. They've agreed that there will be no exterior speakers on the west half of the property, and that there will be no outside activity on that west half of the property. Between 11:00 PM, no, no, that's not right, that there won't be, that outside activity on the site will be limited to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, midnight Friday and Saturday. So anything outdoors, no. But there'll be no exterior speakers of any kind on the west half of the property, so.
Got it. And so the hours of operation is a different, is a, is a separate limitation from, okay, got it. And you said those were, I'm sorry, till 11 on?
11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday.
Okay.
Midnight Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, and you, as the applicant, you all are in agreement with those changes?
I do agree with that.
Okay. I don't have anybody sign up to speak on this. I'd love to hear their commissioners' comments if they have them, but is there anybody that wants to be heard today on 1360, SPOD 1365? Okay, so seeing nobody, is there any other commission discussion on this? Thank you very much, Commissioner Powers, for your work on that. That's great. I don't have anything, so if you're ready to make a motion, go right ahead.
I will move that we approve SPOD 1365, item number 30, with the following technical evaluations. Sign size will be limited to a monument sign, eight feet tall, 120 square feet total. I don't know whether we need to make a designation that it can allow for multiple users or not. Do we care about that? And there will be a 25-foot open space buffer maintained along the west property line, and the tree cover within that space will be preserved as much as possible.
That's TE2?
That's TE2. TE3, there'll be no wall or fence on the west property line because of the existing wall on the property to the west. Number four, no exterior speakers on the west half of the property. And number five, all, all outside activity on the property will be restricted to the hours of, no out, I'm having trouble saying this. No outside activity on the property after 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, or midnight Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Applicants in agreement with the way those were read into the record?
Agree with that.
Excellent. Okay. I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hinkle to recommend approval to city council on SPOD 1365, subject to the technical evaluations, as amended and read into the record by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck, Mr. Carapia.
Next item on the agenda is item 31. Applicant present?
This is SPOD 1357, application to rezone 1534 Northwest 3rd Street from R3 to SPOD 1357.
Applicant with us? Am I crazy, or is this the third time in a row that the applicant has not been here for the item? Is that, is that right? I need someone, okay, I'm gonna, I'd like a motion that we can continue indefinitely. And if she wants to put it back, or they want to put it back on there, they can get it set for an agenda and, but I think we should continue it indefinitely. This is obnoxious at this point.
Might deny it, and that might get their attention.
I hate to do that. That's a step too far, but, but I, but I do think, I don't want to set it for another meeting, only to get placed on an agenda and, you know, so let's just continue it indefinitely.
When we do that, just so I understand what, what happens behind the scenes, it's just at the, at the discretion of the applicant at that point?
The applicant's got to come back. They've got to, they have to take some action when we do that, which, to get it back on the agenda, which is what, just setting it for hearing?
They need an updated ownership list so we can send new notice and 50% of the filing fee.
Yeah, I, yep.
Yeah.
So is there any administrative hassle with that still being there five, six, seven years from now? No? It's just, you just, whatever, okay.
Yeah. So it's Commissioner Heismas Ward, and he actually did email me, which is even, I think that's why I'm so irritated. He emailed me a list of very thoughtful considerations that he had made and tried to work through and all this kind of stuff. So he spent time on it. He's not here, but, so I need a motion from somebody else, but.
I'll move a approval, or I'm sorry, make a motion to continue indefinitely, SPOD 1357.
Take the second on PrimeGov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey to continue indefinitely, SPOD 1357. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. How we doing? There we go. And then that item has been continued. Next item on the agenda is item 32.
This is PUD 1786, application to rezone 3225 Northwest 192nd Street from O1 and 1686.
Good afternoon. Dean Colita with Civil and Environmental Consultants, representing the applicant. On this project, it's currently a PUD and an O1 zoning. Essentially what we're doing, there's some commercial uses and office uses. We're basically going to take some of those uses out and make some residential. And to meet the comp plan, we have some various product types for this type of development here. On the, on the west tract, it's going to be more of a garden homes, your lot line. In the center tract, it'll be a townhome duplex type of product. And then on the east side will be just strictly single-family, R1-type development. So we agree with the TE's except for number two on that TE request, 100 feet from a structure. If you pull up the aerial in the plan, you'll see a sewer line, and actually on this one here, go back one more if you could. So there's an existing sewer line there on the east side of track two between the pond, and this pond has been reworked since they've built that sewer line, because it's actually in place as a public sewer line. So we've already got at least a 20, I think there's a 30-foot buffer there already. We've got a 15-foot setback for our back lot line, so we technically already have about 35, 30 to 40 feet through there. So we'd like to remove that, or at least reduce that setback to, you know, because those lots are obviously the best lots with the backed up to the, the pond there. So having a view fence for the residents to overlook the ponds is kind of the goal on that one. So if we could strike that TE2, that'd be great, or at least, yet at the worst case, you know, reduce that distance.
Give me a distance that you feel comfortable with, given what you said. You, your total was 45 feet between.
50.
So, I mean, just, I'm just curious where your level of comfort is.
We, if we go 40, we'd be great, just to give some flexibility, because, you know, it's, it is a duplex, it could be a tight depth there, but, you know, if we go to 40, I think we can make that work for sure.
Okay. I, I don't have any objection to that change.
Okay.
Could I ask the city staff, is there a reason, what's the reason for 100 feet that the staff recommends?
Same reason every time.
I think that was, was that something that you guys, was that yours, JJ, or was that ours? It's a standard TE note. Been just the riparian area?
Yep.
Okay, I was just making sure that wasn't something more specific.
Structural, not that I know of.
Okay.
Well, I visited a little bit via email with the applicant on this. I'm certainly disappointed that this isn't like a toehold for, you know, Northwest Oklahoma City's thriving future retail area, but I had high hopes when you first came in, that's where we would end up, but it hasn't worked that way. But I understand economics are a funny thing, so, and you guys are responding to those. I don't have any issue, as, as many times as we've seen this, if people will forget, we've seen it a number of times for revisions. It's actually becoming quite cohesive, so I applaud you for that. I don't have any objection or changes that, that are outlined, that aren't included in the MDS or any issues with it. So I don't have anybody sign up to speak. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on PUD 1786? Okay. If not, if there's no discussion from commissioners or my fellow commissioners on this, I'd take a motion on it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend a city council approval of PUD 1786 with the following amendment to technical evaluation two. That all structures shall be placed at least 40 feet from the pond bank.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on PrimeGov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck. Thank you. Next item on the agenda today is item 33, which is the accompanying plat, I believe, Mr. Butler?
Yes, C 7230, preliminary plat of Country Colonnade located north of Northwest 192nd Street and east of North Portland Avenue.
Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street, representing the applicant. This is basically a carry-on for that. All the details are pretty much the same in here, and we do agree to all the TE's.
Okay. There are eight TE's. He's in agreement with all of them. The design of this preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations according to staff, as they relate to the access requirements for subdivisions with between 101 and 200 lots. The design is also in conformance with the proposed PUD 1786, which we just recommended approval on. I don't have anybody sign up to speak. I don't have any concerns. If there's no discussion for commissioners, I'll take a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the eight TE's agreed to.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on PrimeGov. Been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes to approve the preliminary plat. Motion was to approve, C 7230. All votes should be cast? Now all votes should be cast. And that preliminary plat is approved. Next item on our agenda today is item 34.
This is PUD 1855, application to rezone 1320 Northwest 178th Street from, from R1.
My name's David Jones. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We are here to look at rezoning a existing R1 facility into a PUD for development with a restaurant and also a retail center. We were here previously and at the recommendation of the planning commission, we had a meeting with the local residents and the homeowners associations with both Griffin Park and Durbin Hills. We had 15 people in attendance. That meeting was on December the 2nd. Out of that meeting, several items came up that were discussed, and majority of which were agreed to. We have since revised the PUD, provided the design statement language to staff to incorporate the, the changes that the neighborhood had requested and that we agreed to. The first one being the limitation of the structures that abut residential property to single-story and 25-foot maximum height in that single-story. The elimination of grease traps, abutting the residential property of Griffin Park. A inclusion of what we call an impediment fence, which is an attempt to deter people from parking along Griffin Drive and migrating into the development. This fence would be constituted of something into the nature of an 18-inch tall, running the full length of the east side of the project, constructed of either iron pipe, improved iron pipe and/or PVC. The other item, and one of the main items, was the access points onto Griffin Drive. The residents wanted us to, to look at shifting as far north possible, the access drive onto Griffin that we could. We have looked at that. There is opportunity to do so with the new credit union approved project to the east side of us. I would assume the engineering department is going to be interested in us trying to accommodate alignment of our drive with the proposed drive on the credit union. Screen dumpsters, already within the document, we had 50-foot of separation from residential and screen dumpsters. They had asked if we would coordinate our site proof fencing along the south boundary with the three residents that abut our property on the south, and we readily agree to that. And that would be something that would be occurring during the site plan portion. And then they asked us to support the neighborhood on their request to provide, through the city, no parking signage on Griffin Drive. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Glad you had a chance to meet with the neighbors. I understand from emails flowing around, there were around 20 folks there that provided input on the project, which is great. I don't have any additional concerns, other than in your facade regulations, you have that buildings finished with EFS material shall be permitted. I'd like for you to limit that to 30%. Are you in agreement with that?
30%, yes.
Great. And then, there's no date on this PUD, but I just want to confirm for the record that what you've just read is all of those changes were incorporated into the master design statement that were circulated via email this week. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it's recently been provided to staff.
Okay. So I don't think that we need the, the TE's there so long as, you know, read all those in as TE's, so long as we understand that we're incorporating the most recent provided copy to staff of the master design statement, which I did review it, and it does have those changes.
Except for the EFS part, right?
Correct. That's the only change. Yeah, that's the only change, so.
And we did, yeah, we did incorporate the TE's into the document also, which was the limitations of drives on Griffin and 178th Street. The elimination of electronic message displays and non-accessory signs, limiting it to one freestanding sign, providing a 30-foot buffer, addition of sidewalks.
We can leave.
Attempt to save trees along Griffin during the process and the remainder.
Yeah, we can, we can leave those TE's in because he satisfied them. We just need to add a TE8 that limits EFS as a facade material to 30%.
Yes.
And, and we should be in good shape. I don't have anybody sign up to speak. Just to confirm, there is nobody present, or if there is on PUD 1855, this will be your chance to be heard. Seeing nobody, I can't make a motion, but if I could, I'd make a motion to recommend approval, subject to the technical evaluations as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend a city council approval of PUD 1855 with the addition of TE8, limiting facade materials to only 30% EFS.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on PrimeGov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended to city council for approval. Good luck with the project. Next item on the agenda is item 35.
This is case PC 10782, application to rezone 5320 Southwest 19th Street, I2, moderate industrial with AE1 airport environs overlay zone and AE2 airport environs zone to R1, single family.
Is the applicant with us?
We are. David Jones for the applicant with the Orion Group. We are looking at taking what is currently a I2 zoning, laying in the A1 environs overlay, converting it into a R1 straight zoning residential. There is a current operating compost facility on the site. The developer has had the opportunity to meet with the homeowners association administration for Williams Farm to the east, in which I've been reported that they received favorable comments there. They've also had an opportunity, I believe, to visit with Councilwoman Young from Ward 3 on a Zoom call and kind of lay out the situation there, and what the proposed development will be and what it will entail. And again, I believe, had received favorable response. We did get a comment that if you'll take notice on track two in the far northeast corner, where the two property corners between track one and track two do not align, there is an encroachment in that area into the AE2 zone overlay, which does not allow for residential. That correction has been made, so at this point, we're just looking to move forward with the rezoning. I have seen the staff report, and I do know that there is some considerations on the staff's behalf that they have voiced. staff's behalf that they have voiced. So at that point, I'll sit down and listen.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Coffey, real quickly, do you have any questions for the applicant, ma'am?
No, I do not.
Okay. Well, let's hear from staff.
That's the Segregated Utilities Department. This development is actually, we have capacity issues that it could not be served with sanitary sewer. There is a twelve-inch line going that is adjacent to the property that goes down to the lift station, to the intersection, to the north or to the southwest. And there's also another eighteen-inch line that comes into that lift station. So that lift station is currently at capacity. So I'm in favor of this, but I'm just curious how we're, we need to upgrade that lift station. So how are you proposing to be able to route the sanitary sewer?
That's how we're going to do it, is to sit down with you and discuss how we would upgrade various grinder pumps and whatnot, or capacity on that.
Okay. That was just my only issue with this and the concern for it, because this was, when it came across, this is the first time I saw that, we had that.
Is that the reason that staff had recommended the deferral?
For the for of this, yes, sir.
Okay. I don't see that we have much to talk about here.
Also recommended deferral, there were several things that we wanted to look at, including, and this is Urban Future, there was not a comp plan amendment submitted with it. It also has some floodplain issues, common area issues, just some design issues that we wanted to work through.
Okay. Do you think January twenty-seventh gives you enough time to do some of that?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. That's what I'd be in favor of, is a continuance until the twenty-seventh of January. Anybody feel differently?
Nope.
All right. Commissioner Coffey, how do you feel? Do you want to make a motion on that?
For the continuance?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes, I recommend continuance of PC 10782 until January twenty-seventh.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend a continuance to January the twenty-seventh, which would actually be 2022, even though the staff reports is 2021. It's been seconded by.
I said, I think by doing.
Were we buffering, or?
Yes.
Janice seconded the motion?
Yes, she did.
Yes.
Oh, there it goes. Okay. Most of it seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And that item has been continued until January the twenty-seventh. Next item on the agenda is item thirty-six. Mr. Butler?
Yes, this is a conference of plan amendment fourteen, and this is associated with the next case. And I'll go ahead and walk us through that. Cynthia, if you wouldn't mind bringing up that presentation. It's consideration of a proposed map amendment to the conference of plan. This would remove Urban Future land use topology, and this is at a 142.37 acre tract located on the southwest corner of Northwest 150th and North Morgan Road, as you see here. You can see it doesn't quite go up to 150th Street. It leaves a couple hundred feet, I believe, that's right on 150th Street. There is a subdivision to the south on Morgan Road. This is on Morgan Road. Next slide, please. There's the context of the site. And next slide, please. You can see there that it's surrounded by Urban Future with the exception of the site immediately to the south, which is developed. Next slide. It does have water and sewer available. The trouble with this site, next slide, slide, and next slide. The issue is that it's outside the preferred emergency response, and that's partially due to just the overall distance to the fire station, but also due to the lack of connectivity. 150th Street is not improved, and Memorial Road does not go through there just to the north of the airport. So hence the reason for, if you go to the next slide, there's a little bit more detail there showing the streets and their condition.
So how would the fire truck get to that site? It'd go up to one hundred and, or what, is that Memorial?
Yeah, they either have to go up to 150th and back down, or they would have to go down the expressway up on Sarah, over to Morgan and up. Those would be, one of those ways would be the fastest way, but either way, it's not quite, it doesn't get them there fast enough according to our usual preferred standards. And if they did take 150th Street, the fact that it's not, half of it is not improved and the half that is improved is pretty rough, causes problems as well. Next slide, please. Here are the surrounding uses. I mentioned the subdivision to the south. It's been there for several years now. Next slide. And it's currently zoned AA as well as the surroundings, with the exception of PUD 445 to the south. So just here's a summary slide. It is served with the exception of emergency services. And go to the next, oh, I guess this is it. So based on that, the recommendation for denial is purely the issue with the emergency services, which are unfortunately exacerbated by the street network in the area.
Okay.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, who is the Central Oklahoma Habitat for Humanity, and Felton with Habitat is here with me as well. Thank you, Cynthia. So I do want to point out on this slide, in terms of the existing conditions, in addition to the PUD 455, which is both south and to the west, which provides for single-family development, PUD 1699 allows for a modified multifamily development, PUD 1551, PUD 1334, PUD 1742 also all allow for a single-family development. Also worth noting, a half a mile to your west on Sarah and 150th, this commission just, I think it was the last hearing, recommended approval unanimously for that entire quarter section to be a PUD for ideal homes, for a dense single-family development that allowed for lot sizes, lot sizes sub six thousand square feet. So I think it's important, if we look at what I think we used to really inquire about under the comp plan changes, was under Urban Future, well, let me just read what Urban Future says. "Urban Future areas may have access to the city's public water supply or sanitary sewer systems, but not both." Well, of course, here we do have both. We have both water and sewer. Pursuant to the way that we calculate fire response times, it is in the red. We spent a significant portion of our afternoons on two separate Thursdays talking about what you see as R1 up against Piedmont and the portion that Ideal Homes just came through the last time, because if you add in the way that Piedmont has their fire stations, the calculation is different. And although there's not automatic mutual aid, there is the state mutual aid agreement that exists, and my understanding from talking to the folks in Piedmont Fire is that they are working towards an automatic mutual aid agreement with the City of Oklahoma City and the City of Piedmont. So in terms of your question, how they get there from Oklahoma City, perhaps it is a bit more convoluted, but how they get there from the City of Piedmont is not. There is direct access. So I'm going to talk briefly about the putt. I know this is not the putt item, but one of the ways that we think that we can help with the infrastructure issue, if it exists, is some of the features that we have in the PUD. What you'll see in the PUD, the next item, is we have a limitation on certificates of occupancy on any twelve-month period. There can be no more than forty-five certificates of occupancy that could be issued within this PUD in any twelve-month period. Why that's important is it's going to allow the slow roll of this development to come out. Unlike a production home builder or any home builder that is profit motivated, Habitat for Humanity is not motivated by profit. So their need to put as many lots on the ground as possible isn't there. And so they were willing to accept that accommodation offered by Mr. Grove to limit the number of homes to forty-five per year to slow this thing down. This will take over a decade to develop. My belief that within a decade, there will be additional fire stations. Frankly, there's just too much development pressure in this area because of the existing sewer and water. So we believe for the same reasons that it was lifted at the corner of Sarah and 150th, that it should be lifted here as well.
Okay. Well, this is my ward, so I guess I'll start. So I mean, I remember this case came through. We had an application on this site once before, which is, of course, from Central Oklahoma Habitat for Humanity. There were a number of concerns at that point. Neighbors expressed a lot of concerns about various things. The thing that was really concerning to me about it when it came through the first time, I think is still the thing that's the most concerning about it to me today, which is just the infrastructure of this area, not just this area, what you see on the map, but pretty much everything west of Portland. In Ward Eight is this two-lane street network, a lot of which is in really, really bad shape. I don't think Jeff does it justice to say that it's just, you know, not in great shape. There are areas out here where it, I think we had a case recently, I said it looks like somebody bombed it. That's what it looks like. It looks like somebody bombed it. County Line Road is terrible north of here. Sarah Road isn't great. The other challenge, just as a reminder, is when you come down Morgan, if you want to go east on Memorial, you certainly can. You come to an interchange on the north side of the turnpike. You have to cross the overpass and then go eastbound, because it's where it's two-lane. So there's not a, you know, Memorial is a split area. It's a split road. It's westbound on the north and eastbound on the south. And here, there's no westbound. It comes down on the other side, and then it's a two-lane road, one lane in each direction, until you get to Council, where there is also no interchange to the turnpike. So then you have to go to Rockwell. So the only two ways you can get to this site from the highway would be to go south down Morgan, which honestly is the nicest of the roads in this area, because it was recently repaved. When was that done? It was recent, recent.
It was, so, yeah. So one of the main points of contention two years ago was the status of Morgan Road. It looked like a bomb had gone off. There were holes everywhere. We were able to go work with the city council, as well as the Better Streets, Safer City, and they were able to use some funds, and they completely resurfaced Morgan Road to make Morgan Road now newly paved.
And do we know from what stretch to what stretch? I mean, obviously, it extends to the site, no doubt, but does it go to the, was it improvements meant, I mean, I drove it somewhat recently and right outside this, I remember it being pretty nice, but I didn't go south of what would be the Memorial interchange.
I don't know for sure. We were pushing for Memorial. I don't know where they ended up.
Okay. Well, at any rate, you have to go south all the way down to the Northwest Expressway, which is known as the Heffner Road interchange for the turnpike, and then loop back, or you have to do that awkward little dance I just described. I'm told with some level of certainty that there's work being done to prepare, you know, a Council Road point of access to the turnpike. I don't know how long, yeah, I think it's going to happen too, I just don't know when. What I'm encouraged by, what is very unusual, was the ability of the applicant to stagger the construction of the project, which does allow the city time to catch up. And so I think in terms of looking at this from the comp plan standpoint, I understand the fire issue. That little spot of land up there zoned R1, we had a long conversation about fire, recommended it for denial nine-zero, and then city council approved it. So I'm in favor of the removal of the comp plan layer, because there is residential to the south, there's now a residential, I'm going to be so bold as to call it an outpost of residentially-zoned property. That was intentional. That outpost will undoubtedly be developed, and so I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be R1. I guess if I'm being honest with you, my real ulterior motive here is that we've approved that, it's invariably time to improve the streets. We put enough people out here, the good people at city council, we're going to have to build some streets, which is what we need in Ward Eight. So I'm in favor of it. I don't know how everybody else feels. I'd love to hear it if you have different opinions, because this is, it was a tough one for me the first time, it's a tough one for me now, but it's kind of where I am. Thoughts?
Mine are really on the plat, so, you know.
Well, we're two away from that, so you got to hold the phone over there.
Away from that, yeah.
Still think we need consensus from the city council on this fire issue and how we're analyzing this fire issue. We've had this conversation, so I'm not reopening it. Just going to say, still think we need to address it. They need to pass a policy on this that's very clear, that we all just agree to, similar to our issue with septic tanks.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we had that huge discussion as it relates to our outpost here, and, you know, that was believed that the not automatic aid agreement, I don't have the right language, it's not automatic aid, but it's.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid, thank you. There's that the mutual aid agreement was going to save us. Again, you know, at this point, I'm just about putting pressure to force that infrastructure to get funded and make it a priority, if I'm being honest, so.
I would broaden the things we need to get more consistent about, and it's something we can't kick the can down the road, city council over, and that is the issue of urban reserve. I find it discouraging, and I'm sure staff must feel it is too, that these discussions are, you know, so routine that they, we have a policy in place, we have these urban reserve designations out there, and we fairly routinely just ignore them. And that's just problematic for me.
I agree. I think what I always get struggle with is that the site is served by sewer, it's served by water, and so if all we're talking about is fire, and really, again, my overarching concern for this area is streets, you know? And those were the things that, you know, maybe I'm feeling a little bit defeated, but those are the things that really concerned me when we heard the outpost case. And we, you know, we sent the message that we're concerned about infrastructure here from a planning standpoint, and now we're going to have this. I mean, it's going to be developed quickly. And so now there's almost, in my view, it's, I've sort of flipped to believing that we almost need to continue this, because this area is in real need of committed dollars in the next geo bond issue or from funding or whatever. And I'd love to see that happen, and the only way I can think of to do that is to do what they asked us to do, or what they decided to do at the outpost.
But again, you know, the idea behind the urban reserve is bigger than just each piece of property that comes along. You know, the idea of finding a way to contain urban sprawl that didn't require, you know, the drawing of a circle and any moratoriums or, you know, anything sort of that drastic was what really brought about this whole approach.
Right.
Of urban reserve designation. And I think, you know.
Now called Urban Future.
If we're not going to take that seriously, then I think we need to make some big-picture changes. I think the basis upon which it was developed, maybe it's an imperfect tool, but the basis upon which it developed is certainly not less true now than it was when it was developed.
Right.
This, you know, constant sprawl and the cost of providing those services, it's one thing to say, well, we're just going to approve these things, and that's going to force the city to spend this money, whether they want to or not. You know, really, that's not planning.
Right, but you've got a lot of people out here now that are, I mean.
And why are they out there? Because we kept approving.
I know that, but we, I agree to that to some extent. You know, the development started along the turnpike, and it's moved, and, you know, when you look at that map, it's just, it's absurd to me that this property up in the northwest got approved, but these people out here at this point are basically suffering through atrocious infrastructure. And, you know, you get out here and drive this stuff, I live at Council and Memorial right there, I've been there twelve years, so I've driven all these roads a bunch of times, and they're really bad. I mean, like, really, if you've never driven out here, they're really bad. So, but we have all these people out here now, and so it's not like this is this isolated issue that we're looking at, where we see them a lot of times and we say, oh, well, this is way outside. We did say that. We said it right there. This is right adjacent to another neighborhood that, you know, was right by the turnpike. So it gets harder in this case for me, you know?
Can I, I agree with Commissioner Powers. I think that Urban Future matters. It should matter. Sprawl is a huge issue. We all know that. But at the end of the day, even if we were to go with the strategy of saying no to all these comp plan amendments, city council keeps overturning us anyway.
Yeah.
And so I think we need consensus between city council and us on what the policy is. But it does, I agree, it's a serious issue that needs to get addressed, but I just also see no point in us, you know, just saying no for the sake of saying no and only, you know, sending it to city council anyway. We may as well have meaningful input on what goes on. So maybe that's part of yet another thing that we have a separate committee meeting about, is we need to have some discussions with the city council about this and how we can mutually agree upon how to handle it.
It's actually a good idea. I don't know how we make that happen. It's a good idea. Ace, that's a great idea. Ace is gone today.
Nominate Ace.
We're going to form a committee in new business. We're going to put Ace in charge. Great idea.
Just say no, Ace. Just say no.
Before we do that, we need to make a decision on a comp plan amendment. I'm in favor of approving the comp plan amendment change, but I'll entertain a motion whoever wants to make it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the comp plan amendment change, CPA 2021-00014.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take a second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And the comp plan amendment has been, change has been approved. Next item on the agenda is item 37.
Yes, this is item 1862 and associated application to rezone 14801 North Morgan Road from AA to PUD 1862.
Once again, David Box, Platte Way Two, Call Court Drive. Here, not only am I with my client, but I have the rare treat to be here in cooperation and agreement with Mr. Eric Groves. As the chairman said two years ago when this got filed originally, there was a large-scale protest, community meeting held somewhere near here where there was levels of basically all staff, city managers, planning department, city attorney's office. And so we first worked, as I said, to try to find a way to get Morgan Road fixed. That was the predominant concern. We were able to do that. Then we sat down with Eric and tried to work through a PUD. I already mentioned one thing. One of the biggest things was trying to slow roll the development. So we do have a section, I'm going to read it. It is Section 11 Certificates of Occupancy. There shall be a maximum of 45 certificates of occupancy granted in any 12-month period. However, the limitation of certificates of occupancy shall expire upon the completion of either road widening or the addition of turn lanes along Morgan Road between 150th and West Memorial Road. A couple of the other things that were important to Eric's clients that we were agreeable to, we have a 30-foot buffer that will be landscaped along our southern border, and we provide no street connection here. Those were, were things that were important to the neighbors and therefore were important to us. And so we do have those items within the PUD, which leads me to the TEs. TE number one is provide a street connection to Limestone Lane, which is to the south. So based upon our agreement and the way the PU is, PUD is drafted, we do not agree to TE1. TE2, we can agree to. And finally, TE3, we do not agree to. It asks us to provide access to Norfolk's 150th. We don't touch 150th with the application, and 150th is actually in the floodway for a large portion of it. So there's really not a solution that would allow us to connect to 150th. We have adequate access on Morgan. We have two separate access points, both of them boulevard entries, and then we have multiple points of connection to the west side of the development. So we do not believe we need the access onto 150th. When 150th gets improved, it's going to be a much broader project that will no doubt involve not only the city, but also probably the county. So with that, we agree to TE2. We would ask to delete TE's 1 and 3. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, Ann Felton is here. If there are any specific questions about Habitat and who they are and what they do, but it is a very important project. You know, we have a housing crisis. We have an affordable housing crisis. And there is a need to find places that are affordable for people to be able to live. And we believe that this is one of those places that will afford those folks, a wonderful school district, and a place to live. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Box. I don't have any questions at the moment. I probably will have a couple, but Mr. Groves looks eager to share his consensus agreement with Mr. Box. And since that's the first time that's happened in the history of Oklahoma City, we'd love to hear it.
Not really, but not often. Eric Groves, attorney representing Stone Ridge Farms to the immediate south of the subject property. When we began this several years ago, Habitat wanted straight R1 zoning. We objected to that for obvious reasons and persuaded them that we should do it by PUD where we could all have some input. So we proceeded along those lines. We began negotiating a PUD. COVID interrupted the process somewhat, so we're here a lot later than we originally intended. But our principal concerns when this started was we wanted densities that were comparable to Stone Ridge Farms. I think we have those. Our main concern was an infrastructure concern, which is Morgan Road, which was in pathetic shape when all of this began. And of course, we think it should be a four-lane road that could accommodate our neighborhood and the new one to come. That's not going to happen anytime soon. David and Councilman Stone Cypher and I all talked to Eric Wenger about that. And, you know, we're not going to see funding for that probably until the next geo bond issue. It's a sad set of affairs, but there it is. So the best deal we could cut for the neighborhood was to get it resurfaced. We really wanted resurfacing in some turn lanes. We haven't got the turn lanes yet, but we do have the resurfacing, so at least it's drivable. So that, part of that problem is, is, you know, helped for the time being, but eventually it's going to have to be a four-lane road. Now, Mr. Box added Section 11 to the design statement to phase the project in a way, no more than 45 homes a year, basically, in a way that may make it easier to eventually get Morgan Road in shape where it can handle the kind of traffic that the project will generate. So the only other matter that was on the minds of my clients is we didn't want connectivity between Stone Ridge Farms and the Habitat project for a couple of reasons. One, we don't see that it serves any purpose. People who want to come down to the neighborhood and come down Morgan Road and come in like everyone else does. There's an elementary school down in Memorial. What we're trying to avoid is traffic from the Habitat project cutting through Stone Ridge Farms to get their kids down to Memorial. We'd rather they take Morgan. They're, you know, these are relatively narrow streets in, in Stone Ridge Farms. There's kids that play in those streets. We just not, we would prefer not to have the traffic coming through the neighborhood. And anybody who needs to leave Habitat and go south can use Morgan Road and have a smoother ride than they used to. So we think that the connectivity requirement and the subdivision regs should be varied. And we know we need six of you to do it. We ask that you do it. It's, at the core of the bargain that we made with Habitat. We would like to see the project go forward. We have a lot of respect for the work that Habitat and Ann Felton do in our community. But we do have to be focused on design. And I think this, this design that we worked out is one that's going to function. It'll be rolled out over several years. And if we get lucky, we get a new Morgan Road by the time it's done. Questions?
None for me. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Assuming there are people here signed up to speak. Is that correct?
The only person who signed up to speak was Mr. Groves. I'm certainly going to ask.
Then I will make my comment on, oh, unless they're, let's, I'll wait until after that.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on PUD 1862? Please come forward.
I think we're still in the afternoon, so good afternoon, Commissioner.
Just barely.
I just want to say to Ms. Felton, I support the mission and your community. My concern, I'm sorry, my name is Ken Black. I live in Stone Ridge Farms. I sent
What is your address there?
10117 Northwest 143rd Street.
Thank you.
I've nicknamed 150th Rabbit Coyote Lane. It's basically a one-lane road. Morgan Road got repaved today as we were leaving to come down to the commission meeting. I agree with the agreement of 45 units a year. My concern in the design statement is it says 45 units a year unless the road is widened or turn lanes are added. I'm a transplant from Maryland. I don't know what a turn lane consists of. Whether you can just pave an area, boom, the 45 units is lifted. I think that needs to be clarified. And really, I just really look forward to having neighbors. We do have actual coyotes behind us now, so having people would be great. And that's all I've got to say to you.
Well, we appreciate you coming down. I think the intention there is that if the road were ever to repay, be repaved with a central turn lane.
Correct.
Versus a four-lane format. That's the intention.
In other words, Morgan Road right now is paved, wouldn't allow for a turn lane.
Right.
It would have to be widened in some manner.
To allow for.
Correct. So that the traffic continue on.
Yeah.
So it's either widened
It's not like a deceleration lane, which would allow you to sort of like veer off. That's not what's being, that's not what that language is, creates. Well, I'm certainly happy to entertain if staff has thoughts as to how we ensure that's memorialized. But that, as soon as I read it, that's exactly the way I took it.
We could add, we could add the word center. So it's center turn lane or widening.
Okay. All right. What, and that was in, David, where is that in the?
It's Section 11 of the PUD. It's a section
Okay. Or addition of center turn lanes?
Uh huh. Yeah, we can just add the word center before lanes.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, Section 11 Certificates of Occupancy is the name of the section.
Okay. All right. Now let's have the difficult conversation. The difficult conversation is going to surround for me the connectivity piece. And I really want, I'm going to make two arguments. One contradicts the other. And my fellow commissioners can tell me which, how they feel about it. So Stone Ridge Farms has public streets. They're public streets. They were built to public standard. This neighborhood is going to have public streets. On the one hand, I'm never supportive of not requiring connectivity. Connectivity is being provided by this project according to the plat we will look at next to the west so that if additional residential development goes, we can help in-round some of these infrastructure problems. Mr. Groves' comment that there's not a reason for it, I said the exact same thing five years ago until I got clubbed over the head enough times, that I began to feel differently, which is that by allowing connectivity, you are ensuring access for emergency vehicles. You're ensuring routes when the arterials are under construction, which I hope desperately this occurs. You're allowing for circulation. You're allowing for all kinds of things. I don't think there's any real risk in looking at the layout of this neighborhood in connection with Stone Ridge Farms that someone is going to opt to go wind through all of this on a neighborhood street as opposed to just go to Morgan and go down. I'm a little perturbed at the connection because it is so far to the west. And I don't know, I guess that's something we need to watch for more closely, is where we require that connection. Because the other side of my argument is that the connection here is a little bit futile. It's not going to serve the purpose that it would have served if it had been on the east side of 143rd when this was done, where it could actually facilitate some ingress and egress to Morgan Road in the event that that were necessary, either for a fire truck that's already driving through a maze to get here, or, you know, just in general access to the property. Just made a lot of sense. So I'm a little, I'm a little torn about how strongly I feel about the connectivity here, but
Like where it goes is within our curfew. I mean, we can require it and place it where we think it needs to be.
Well, we, we can from them, but it's already developed to the south. So the only place it can connect is the existing stub, which is on Lime, thank you, Limestone Lane. Had we caught that connection being placed on the far west side of the development, I think, looking at this now, we just missed the other puzzle piece, you know. And that neighborhood's been there long enough to be fully developed. So it's, it's not, PUD 445 was quite a while ago. But I'm just saying, that's something that we should watch for because it makes the connectivity far less valuable than it would have been. That's my point. So I genuinely am torn. I'm not in favor of letting neighbors dictate connectivity. It's a little bit like letting neighbors dictate infill projects. We hear the same arguments over and over. We have a policy that I feel very strongly about, that I am strongly supportive of, that I think should be enforced in almost every instance. My only tear here is, does a crash gate not make sense because it has no real purpose? I just, I'm, I'm looking for feedback from other commissioners on this because I'm really torn about it. So.
I don't, I don't know that I have the right compromise, except to say I strongly agree with what you just said. I have very strong opinions that have only gotten stronger because I agree with you.
Yeah.
When I first started on the commission, I didn't have this strong feeling about connectivity. It's only over time of seeing it that I see the value. I think it's absolutely wrong for us to not be connected. However, good government is about good compromise. And I think they've done a lot of good work to try to get us to a point where everybody's happy. And so I'm going to vote for it for that reason. But I do think we need a strategy, once again, that's cohesive, where we're going to agree to, whether or not we're going to allow connectivity to even be negotiated. And maybe that needs to be the tact we take from now on, is we don't care. This is our policy and we're going to enforce it.
Well, that is the tact I think we've taken in almost any instance where there's obvious value to the connectivity, which is in almost all instances, you know.
Why the stub's there.
That's why the stub is there.
Exactly. So you were on notice when you bought your house on that street, that you were going to be connected to a neighborhood. I think the objection is to the fact that it's a Habitat for Humanity neighborhood, which only upsets me more that we wouldn't require the connectivity. But again, if, if all the parties are in agreement, then I'm okay.
I, I don't, I, I don't see a real basis for distinction here. I mean, they have done good, good work. They have done a lot of compromise. It's gotten them a long way, and that's great. The neighborhood has gotten a lot of things they want out of that process as well as the applicants. But, you know, if we start permitting neighbors to come and say, we just don't like it. We just don't want it there. It's not, you know, there's not some physical reason why it shouldn't be there. There's not a creek. Wouldn't require a bridge. It's not, I mean, you know, as you say, the stub's been there a long time. People know. I just, I really have a hard time seeing why we say yes to these people and say no to 999 out of 100 others. It's just really problematic for me.
I, I agree. I agree. I mean, this is one of those things that unfortunately, we had this debate so many times, particularly early on. I go back, you know, when this commission was fairly new four years ago, it was just Commissioner Powers, basically. I mean, that was, you were, you know, and, but staff and having conversations about it and hearing all the arguments over time, I, it's just a really important part of what we do to connect the city. And I don't, you know, this one is arranged awkwardly. I'm going to start watching for that. But I'm, I lean toward favoring it because we've not made those sort of concessions, you know, unless there's been a private street issue. So I just, you know, I don't know. Anybody else feel differently?
I might add something, Mr. Chairman.
Just a second because we're having committee or commission discussion. Does anybody else feel differently than that?
No, I, I want the connection. I mean, my neighbor didn't want the connection that they got, but they got it. And they'll be better off for it. And I don't think I can support it without the connection. And the applicants are supportive of it, the connection. It's the protesters that aren't. So I
Right.
I just
Mr. Groves, do you have a comment you want to make? I think there's obviously a consensus, but I certainly want to hear your opinion.
Well, I don't see six votes for a variance.
That's fine. No one spoke up to the contrary.
But just let me share with you all in a very candid way, what alternative does that leave me? That was at the core of the bargain that I worked out with David. It's really, really important to my clients. Now, so what's left to me? I can vacate the stub, close it, vacate it through the council. That's one way to deal with it. If the council approves the PUD as written, there's no connection. So, you know, and that could happen. Councilman Stone Cypher's been very supportive of this neighborhood's effort to work something out with Habitat, which took two years to do. Now, I think that some credence and some respect should be shown to neighbors who work these things out. You know, I mean, I'm hearing, well, that's not good enough. Just because the neighbors don't want it together doesn't mean we shouldn't enforce the regulation. I understand that. But what possible purpose does it have? I mean, if we thought that it was beneficial, we'd agree to it. But it serves, it serves no purpose. It's out of the way. I mean, it, it confers no benefit, in my view.
But the other side of it, other side of that argument works against you. Why would anybody, you know, snake through this neighborhood to come all the way over here to cut through yours? It just doesn't make any sense.
To get to the school, usually. But, you know, I don't see six votes for it. So, you know, I mean, we have other, but it was at the heart of the bargain, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to get it. But I don't see six votes. So I don't think I'm going to get it.
So I'm going to jump out. I've been agreeing with everything. Commissioners, you've been saying that this particular design of this funnel on the west side down to that one little street, and even though they kind of saw it, I've looked on the map where that school is, it does look like however many there is over there, that 200 houses, I do, it does funnel down to that school. Maybe that's okay, but this particular, because we let somehow that happen way over here in this side, and way this water is and all these things, there's something about this unique to me that it looks like a lot of, a lot of moms and dads racing through a long ways of residential to get to that school down south.
Which is why I think it's more likely that people are going to take whatever the quickest path is to Morgan Road if you're living in this new development.
Right. What I'm saying is I think the quickest to that school is going to be to go down south.
Go south. Oh, okay.
And it's more of a safety issue. It's not, that will be the quickest way. It won't be traffic jams. It will be a safety issue. Somebody driving fast, kids standing out waiting for the school bus, whatever. It will be a safety issue. Somebody driving fast, kids standing out waiting for the school bus, whatever all's going on there. It looks like a long ways to go from the entire west half of that, down to that school, but it will be the quickest way. And it's a, it's a lot of safety issue, it looks like to me. That goes actually not just for the neighborhood down south. It actually goes for the people on the southwestern part of this Habitat section versus Forsen to Morgan. You can, it's, it's drawn to be a more major road going toward east to Morgan. Winding through down here, turn, you gotta turn right. You gotta turn, you know, turn left, turn right. You're going around corners to, to snake down to that school. I don't like the look of it.
I have an idea. Mr. Box and I have talked about it. How about a crash gate?
That doesn't really, that doesn't address what, yeah, the connectivity part.
Okay, all right. Just thought, Mr. Box, I thought we would throw that out. Withdrawn.
I'll vote for the variance. I'll just, I'll put that out there. I know where everyone's counting, doing the math in their head. I will vote for the variance. I will support it because I do believe that there has been a sincere effort to come to agreement. It is significantly further west. I, I understand that. In general, I just, I think this policy needs to be enforced. And so I guess, as two people who are primarily responsible for a number of these negotiations, putting you on notice that in the future, I'm not going to, because I really do think that the connectivity matters and we need to enforce the policy for all the reasons that have been named repeatedly. But I, I will move the variance, at least, and see if there's other people on the commission who agree with me.
Well, very quickly, because we're still in the PUD, the variance would come in Item 38, which is the preliminary plat. What we're talking about now is TE1, and whether or not that should be deleted. TE3, I'm in agreement with deleting that TE. That's silly. Two access points for the subdivision, that the way that you accomplish that, just so everybody's clear, based on my reading of the staff report, is that if we don't require the connection, then the divided median has to extend all the way through to the west side. Is that correct?
Whatever is required is what we will do. But Kendall's been working with staff on that, so yes.
Am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Dillon? Okay, so we leave TE2. They're gonna have to meet that. There were two options laid out in the staff report for them to be able to do it. I'm gonna stick with the policy. I'm not, I'm not in favor of striking TE1. But I will, I'll, you know, I'll call for a motion in one direction or another, and let's just see where we are. That's, that's all we can do at this point, because it's just holding the thing up, so.
Is it just the TE, or does it need to be a variance? A no?
No, it's not a variance. That will come next. And if we wanna grant the variance for the connection within the preliminary plat, we'll have to provide a variance.
Gotcha.
But for, for this-
For this, just zoning, yeah.
Correct. Yep. So if somebody wants to take a shot at a motion, I'll, I'll certainly receive it either way.
So the only, the only change that needs to be done is to remove TE1 and TE2. That's the, that is the request.
No, to remove TE1, that's it.
Remove TE1.
We need to add the word center in Section 11.
Oh, yeah.
In center turn lane.
Yeah, so we wanna add a TE4, forgive me, to Section, to Section 11, which is, give me one second, I made the note. So, so, Joe, begin the sentence, "However, the limitation of certificates of occupancy shall expire upon the completion of either road widening or the addition of a center turn lane along Morgan Road between 150th and West Memorial."
Could I?
I'm sorry?
And deleting TE3.
So west to the, okay. Could I suggest that if, if there is, if TE1 is deleted, excuse me, could we modify it to do a pedestrian connection? That would allow kids to bike and walk to the school and-
I was just picturing the exact same thing. Are you talking about there at Limestone?
Could be Limestone, could be further east where there are open space connects, either way.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
If there's opportunity there.
We're fine with that, rather than vehicular or pedestrian connection point?
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Because a lot of your concerns, you guys were talking about connectivity, is a lot of that biking and walking and walking dogs and whatever. That's great. I think that's a lot better than being so harsh as to just build houses all the way across there and they can't access it.
I agree. But are we saying we would wanna modify TE1 to just require a pedestrian connection to Limestone? Or we're saying just require a pedestrian connection to the south?
I would strike TE1 and I would add a TE5 to require a pedestrian connection. And if you wanna specify Limestone, I think that way it's clear.
I think that's the only, well, maybe through the flood plain.
Could be there where the water is, right?
What's that?
Could it be there where the water is?
Yeah, it could be in the flood plain. But I mean, I think Limestone Way is the only place. My engineer is nodding yes. That's the only place to do it.
Then I think that we are, I think we're ready. I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1862 with the following amendments. Delete TE1, add TE4, requiring that Section 11 be modified to read, "However, the limitation of certificates of occupancy shall require upon the completion of either road widening or the addition of a center turn lane along Morgan Road." That we, go ahead, David.
Delete TE3.
Delete TE3, and then require a pedestrian connection on Limestone Lane to the south.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1862, subject to the technical evaluations as amended and read into the record by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey, so please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast.
No, they're not. No, it's working fine. I think, I think I'm persuaded by the inclusion of a pedestrian access. Because, because the vehicular access, in this case, is so inconveniently located, I think that combination of things gets me there.
All votes should be cast. And the item is recommended for approval. Next item on the agenda is Item 38, which is the accompanying preliminary plat.
This is C 7384, preliminary plat in Cornerstone Creek, located south of Northwest 150th Street and west of North Morgan Road, along with the variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
For the last time, David Box, Fox 22, Call Core Drive, here with the same folks that have been with me for the last 20 minutes. We agree to all of the TEs here. We do need the variance on TE2. TE2. We do have, I don't know if we still need it. It says interconnectivity between quarter sections. I don't know, does it specify vehicular interconnectivity? Okay. So we need it. But we will have connectivity in that it will be pedestrian based. Happy to answer any questions.
So just to be clear, you, we do, you need the variance to TE2, and we need to specify that it is for the provision of pedestrian access?
I believe that's what staff's saying. It just says interconnectivity. I, I just don't know if the subregs say vehicular interconnectivity.
I think we probably need the variance, and then we need to specify a TE9 to require pedestrian connection. That would be how I would suggest we do it. Yes, okay. That's kinda what I figured.
Yeah.
All right. So, do we, okay. I don't think we need to have much discussion on it. We just did it. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on preliminary plat C 7384? Nobody? Okay. All right. I'll take a motion. Somebody wants to make it?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
One second. Jared Martin?
Yeah. So we just wanted to clarify. He indicated that they would meet the code for the, to, to make it satisfy the, for the access. We indicated in the staff report that the boulevard was the other option if the, if the connection to the south didn't happen. There is a third option we don't wanna take off the table by making it quite that specific, if he's okay with that.
Which is?
To, to maybe connect up to one of the cul-de-sacs that's there, to, to add a loop that would then get past that intersection. So if you look at the, Cindy, can you, is there a way we can pull up the map? Yeah. So you have that, and that doesn't have the street names on it, but you have a choke point there where basically all of the traffic for the north and the west portions, basically two-thirds of the subdivision, has to pass through the one intersection.
Right.
If they, the cul-de-sac that's just to the west of that, you can see that cul-de-sac that comes south off the main entrance. If that cul-de-sac were to connect back to one of the other streets, it would provide a loop that goes around that intersection, because you could come in off the south entrance off Morgan and get through, pass that intersection if there were a wreck at that intersection.
You're not saying that we wanna require that. You're saying we wanna leave that as an option.
Leave that as an option, yeah. Because our TE is very specific about a boulevard.
Okay.
I think if we could, to make it say something a little more-
Or delete TE3.
Yeah, delete the TE and then just say that they'll, or maybe modify it to where they would meet the code as far as access is required when final plats come through. That would give us the option to do one or the other and not just the boulevard, if that makes sense.
Okay.
I don't know if I've made that clear or not.
Clear as mud. I think we can get it, though. So I think we could just say that, do you have a suggestion? You're, you look like it's right on the tip of your tongue there.
For the record, Kendall, Dylan, Crafton, I, I think simply we can delete TE3 so that it's not requiring the boulevard, and we can simply say that we'll meet the access requirements in the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
That, that should cover it. But what Jared is mentioning is, if this cul-de-sac were to loop through and connect with this street, that fully complies with no ambiguity in relationship to your subdivision regulations and access. There's a little confusion as to whether or not it currently meets it or it does not.
Yeah.
But we will agree that it meets the code.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the current issue is that from a fire perspective, the way around is not, doesn't provide enough separation between separate access points, that they, they would feel more comfortable if there was a little more separation. A boulevard would technically do it. It possibly already does. But having that loop around that, that intersection would, would give them a little more separation.
Got it. I'm with you. Okay. So delete TE3 and we just add the 9. TE9 that would say you're gonna meet the access requirements of the subdivision regulations.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So if I understand this correctly, we need TE2, we're deleting TE3, we're adding TE9, which is to require pedestrian connection at Limestone, and then we're adding TE10, which says you're gonna meet the access requirements, since we deleted TE3, just belts and suspenders.
But we're, we're inserting the word vehicular in TE2. Regulations relating to vehicular interconnection.
We're granting a variance to vehicular, but requiring pedestrian connectivity.
Do we need TE9 if we already required it in the PUD?
Well, what, yes, we definitely do, because the subdivision regulation is what's at issue. And the variance to that, they need to get around the, the connection requirement, which is why I suggested that we go forward with the variance and then we just, to, you know, to grant them that so they don't have to have the connection.
And specify what we are allowing.
And then specify the requirement of pedestrian connectivity.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. If we're clear as mud on that, somebody, anybody make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move a variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the variance. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. That variance is approved. So now we just need a motion on the item.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of C 7384 with the following amendments, that we delete TE3, that we add TE9, requiring pedestrian connection on Limestone Avenue between the, on the south, and adding TE10, that we, that the developer will meet the access requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, perfect. I've got a motion. Take the second on Prime Gov. Then seconded by Commissioner Coffey to approve the preliminary plat, subject to the amended TEs as read. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved. Next item, thank you guys. We appreciate it. Good luck with the project, Ms. Felton. Next item on the agenda is Item 39.
Item 39 is an ordinance for public hearing and recommendation relating to the zoning and planning code, amending Chapter 59 by amending Article 6, adding a conditional use related to animal raising chickens and quail.
Who's presenting on this? Somebody, anybody?
Chickadee? Cow?
I wasn't going to do a PowerPoint since we introduced it last time. So, I mean, I can go over just what's in our staff report if you want to, as far as basically what the ordinances, amendments will be. Or if you don't want me to do that and just have public comment in it, since we-
I think I'm fine with that. I mean, I read it. I read what's, what's in the report or what was in our staff report. So I understand that we were presented a, a pretty lengthy presentation when it was introduced at our last meeting. So I'm fine just hearing from people who signed up to speak and let's see if anybody feels differently. Okay, let's do it. First, what? Okay. First person that I have is Jimmy Durant.
My name is Jimmy Durant, 8800 Shearingham Drive. I'm the Director of Public Policy and Government Affairs for SSM Health St. Anthony. You might ask why I'm here on behalf of this resolution. Well, first of all, a little history about St. Anthony. We're the oldest hospital in the state of Oklahoma. We were founded in 1889 from some, by some sisters coming down, excuse me, from St. Louis. So we have a long history of being in the community and caring for the community. Just a little bit of Oklahoma history for you. Our original building was on the side of the Murrah Building bombing Memorial today. It was open for about a year. It closed because of drafty windows and things, and somebody donated some land on the outskirts of town, and that was 10th and Lee where we're located today. The sisters had chickens. They had cows, and they fed the poor, and they fed the needy there. I have with me today Andrew Oakes, who is our Director of Mission Integration. So we, we have a long history. We also have a long history in the city of Oklahoma City of food deserts and food insecurity. And food insecurity is a impediment to children learning. We believe that passing this ordinance could help other cities, other people in town for food purposes. If you look at the 25 largest cities in the state, in the United States, only Philadelphia has more restrictive ordinances on chickens than Oklahoma City. Houston, Dallas, St. Louis, New York City, Washington DC, Boston, they all allow urban chickens. They have seen in the past that allowing people to raise chickens, for the most part only hands. There are a few of the cities that'll actually allow roosters, and that's not what this ordinance calls for. It helps people with food insecurity. So we would encourage you guys today to pass this ordinance on to the City Council so we can move it forward at their, at their request. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do. I have a question. Last presentation we heard, I'm not sure, being from St. Anthony qualifies you as a medical professional, but we heard about how the diseases they bring and, and the problems they cause is, I mean-
I, I am, that is not part of my expertise. I'm a politician, not a farmer, and I'm also not a veterinarian, so I can't, I can't answer those questions.
Well, now, as a politician, chicken is never-
Careful.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I can't answer that question.
No, we appreciate it. Next person that signed up to speak is Sarah Brayden. Hope I said that correctly. All right, I'm one for 20 today. Not bad.
Thanks. My name is Sarah Brayden. I live at 1143 Northwest 38th Street.
Ms. Brayden, what time did you get here today?
About 1:25.
We're glad to have you. Welcome to City Hall. Sorry for the long day.
Thank you. Thank you. I love it. It's been fascinating. I can address the disease issue quite, quite well. Salmonella is what was mentioned a couple of weeks ago. Salmonella does occur in backyard chickens. It also occurs in wild birds. It's quite common in wild birds. If you have a bird feeder or a bird bath in your backyard, anytime you fill, fill up the bird feeder with bird feed or with bird seed, or fill up the bird bath with water, you should immediately carefully wash your hands with hot soap and water, hot water and soap, sorry, because of salmonella. That's, that's how you deal with salmonella. You wash your hands. You cook food properly. Salmonella can also be found in eggs that you buy at the grocery store. Can also be found in raw chicken that you buy at the grocery- grocery store. One, and this is all from the CDC's website, one out of every 25 packages of raw chicken from the grocery store, according to the CDC, is contaminated with salmonella. So, salmonella is in, probably in your refrigerator, so it's just an issue, but, you know, wash your hands and cook your food properly. So, not, not, not something where you allow backyard chickens, you need to, you know, be too, like, it's not gonna, it's not gonna create a problem that's not already existing. I emailed a document. I don't know.
I reviewed it. I read it.
Great. Okay. So, code enforcement, I think, you know, is a big concern. We don't allow backyard chickens in Oklahoma City, so, you know, speculating about the effect it will have on code enforcement, I think, isn't very useful. So, I called code enforcement officials in the eight cities that we looked at, talked to, Norman was the only one that I couldn't, I didn't ever get ahold of somebody. I mean, I don't have a problem...
They were busy looking for a football coach.
I don't know what's going on. Yeah.
They found him. Call back.
So, yeah, I mean, I find it interesting that, to talk to these code enforcement officials. I am obviously, well, maybe not obviously, I'm in favor of allowing backyard chickens in Oklahoma City, but I tried to be very honest in the document that I sent out. There are code enforcement issues, obviously. Sometimes, you know, in Bethany, for example, seven or eight per week over the summer. I don't know what was going on in Bethany over the summer. And in some of these cities, you know, they go two, two or three months before they, without having a complaint. So, I hope that addresses any code enforcement concerns that anybody might have.
I thought I found it to be very helpful, because that's my biggest concern here, actually, which is, I'll share with my commissioners, but that's my biggest concern. And so, I actually took great interest in your email, and I really appreciated it.
Okay, good. I'm glad that was helpful. Another thing that, that came up a couple of weeks ago, that comes up every time we start talking about backyard chickens, is property values. And last time, city council was considering allowing backyard chickens, there was a big, you know, a lot of people said, oh, property values are going to plummet. So, what I did then, and I didn't have time to do it this time, is I called a whole bunch of realtors in Tulsa, and in Tulsa, backyard chickens have been allowed forever. I thought, you know, if anybody would know about property values being low because of backyard chickens, it would be a realtor in Tulsa. I called dozens of realtors in Tulsa before I even found one who even knew that backyard chickens are allowed in the city of Tulsa. So, not only is it not an issue of property values being suppressed because of backyard chickens, but most realtors that I talked to didn't even know it was allowed. The one who did know that it was allowed, the only reason she knew that backyard chickens were allowed was because she was showing a house where they had a hen house in the backyard with chickens in it, and she was showing the house to a prospective buyer. The prospective buyer was very excited to see the hen house and was hoping that the hen house and the chickens would be included if she bought the house. So, that's, that was the only realtor...
It was written as an inclusion.
So, I, that's all, about all I have to say. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I feel like you did a civic service. Again, I really appreciate you taking the time to do some homework, and I did think your email was very level. I kept reading, going, okay, is she in favor or is she not in favor? But, but I appreciated it a lot. So, again, thanks for coming down and joining us today.
The question I have for you, you've done a very good job of addressing the issues that have been raised by others. Why do you think it's important for us to do this?
I, the food insecurity, food desert issue, I think is very important. My family, we're, we are gardeners, and we ride our bikes everywhere instead of driving cars. We're tree-hugging environmentalists. And we just, we love, we love our chickens. I'll come clean here.
So, you got, you're telling me you got illegal chickens right now?
Right.
Is that what you're saying on the record, ma'am?
If I, if I, if the Action Center gets a call about my, my chickens, I'll know, I'll, I'll have it narrowed down to who probably...
And your address for the record one more time is... I'm just kidding.
It doesn't necessarily make financial sense to have backyard chickens. You know, they do stop laying after a couple of years. By then, they're pets, they're beloved pets. I mean, I have cats, so talk about not making financial sense. But, yeah, they're wonderful pets. And the children, when my kids were little, they learned so much, and all their friends learned, you know, where eggs come from, where their food comes from. Those people have grown into adults who, you know, don't just think that eggs come from a styrofoam carton from Walmart.
Have you had any negative interaction with your neighbors about your chickens over the years?
One of my neighbors...
On admission.
One of my neighbors, because of my backyard chickens, she got backyard chickens. She doesn't have them anymore. She, she gave them to me because her work, her work situation changed. But, yeah. And I have one neighbor who's angry that we don't have roosters because she thinks, why have chickens without roosters? I have a neighbor who, neighbors who love them. They, when they go out in their backyard, they can hear them clucking, reminds them of Grandma's farm. So, yeah.
And so, probably the most compelling argument I heard the last time we listened to this issue was about dogs. I have dogs, and they bark at everything. And I just wondered, do your chickens not set off the neighborhood dogs at all?
No, my next door neighbor who had chickens also had dogs, and the neighbor behind her has dogs, and, you know, we've never had problems with barking dogs. And I have dogs in my neighborhood. I mean, there's dogs in my neighborhood that every time I ride my bike past, they fling themselves against the fence and are barking, you know, like they're going to try and rip my head off.
Those are my dogs doing that.
Yeah. And, and I'm okay with that. I mean, I, they're great neighbors, and I respect their, and their dogs, you know, I'm sure their dogs bark at squirrels and bark at, at cats and bark at the mailman.
They do. All the same.
But they don't bark incessantly. And I think if they barked incessantly, I would think, I would talk to my neighbors and say, you know, hey, your dogs are barking 24 hours a day. Can you do something about it? But they don't bark incessantly.
Okay.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming down. Appreciate your time. And Mr. Durant, I don't want you to fill left out. I don't know what time you got here either, but we appreciate you taking the time to share your thoughts with us as well. I have Laura Johnson signed up to speak next. Welcome back, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you once again for being available to hear people. And I want to commit to Sarah that I absolutely did not write her address down. Promise. Laura Johnson, 2532 Southwest 101st Street, Board 5. I, I need to ask, did you all get a letter that I wrote to you all? Okay. I didn't see it in the packet, so...
I don't believe I did.
No, I did not.
Did anybody receive it? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss an email or something.
I sent it to the planning department, but I, I didn't see it in the packet, so I wasn't sure it went through. So, again, I, I live in Board 5. I live in a house that is 1,300 square feet on .19 acres. I bought it 40 years ago. It's paid for. I intend to live there until I cannot live independently anymore. And so, it matters to me whether or not there are chickens. And I, I am, for the record, opposed to the change in the chicken ordinance. I want to point out that we do allow chickens in Oklahoma City. It just has to be on an acre or more of land. And so, I do not like the idea that my .19 acre of land that is adjoined by six other properties that are .14 acres of land will now have chickens adjacent to it. And here are some of the reasons that I am concerned. So, Commissioner Powers pointed out, I had raised the issue about dogs before, and barking dogs is a concern of mine. The way this ordinance is written, particularly as it, as it applies these conditions, will allow chickens to be in many yards. And I, I think that that will trigger dogs and possibly other pets to be noisy. I think that's the noise that will arise from the effect of the chickens. I am concerned about disease and other health hazards. So, it's been pointed out that chickens carry salmonella. I realize that there are other products that carry salmonella. Generally, if you cook them properly, you're not as, at as much risk. But I would say that the salmonella exposure is now, to me, from my neighbor's chickens rather than something that I have purchased and am in control of cooking. I am concerned about that. CDC indicates on their website that those who are more likely to get and be affected more severely by salmonella are children under the age of five, people who are over the age of 65, which I will be soon, and people with weakened immune systems such as cancer patients, who won't have a lot of control about the, the stormwater that washes into their yard, for example, that may carry chicken waste and therefore salmonella. In terms of safety, I'm also concerned about the natural predators to both chickens and their eggs. You know, if you, if you live out in an, in a rural area, you're already having issues possibly with everything from raccoons to snakes and that sort of thing. I'm concerned that a chicken coop with eggs in it will attract things, animals like that, and possibly even more frequently to your yard, because those, that's an attractive thing for, for those animals. I'm also concerned about odor. When I was here last time, I didn't mention that because, but I was sitting in the audience, and people turned around and said to me, man, we had chickens. They stunk. They was terrible. And with our houses being so close to each other, I am concerned that that odor has much more effect than on an acre or more. I am concerned about the code violation issue. The way that the ordinance removes or applies conditions, I think is ineffective, because I know that our code enforcement officers are already not allowed to come into people's backyards without their permission. They're not even allowed to look over my fence into someone else's backyard and write a citation for that. So, how will those conditions be enforced when there's no permit, thus no initial inspection, and no access to someone's property without their permission? So, I think that that idea that the, the effects will be limited is a little bit imaginary. And I, I do know that our code enforcement officers are already quite overloaded with all the code violations that they have to enforce today. And so, with no additional revenue source identified, since there's no permit and no permit fee, I'm concerned about that. I, I think that the discussion about food insecurity, I too am concerned about food insecurity, and I admittedly live in a food jungle. There are so many food places that I can walk to from my house that are within a mile or a mile and a quarter of my house. It's almost embarrassing. But they, I lived there first. They came after me. So, apparently, they knew I liked buying groceries or something. So, but the, the idea that this is an inexpensive food source is a little bit of a myth, since this ordinance will require a coop, which costs money to purchase. The food alone, if you Google, how much does it cost to raise chickens, the food for these chickens would be more than $30 a month. So, right there, you can buy 10 dozen eggs, organic brown large eggs at Walmart for that kind of money. So, I, I don't know. I realize that, you know, everybody can't just hop in the car and drive to Walmart and get a dozen eggs. But the fact is, if you're going to do your grocery shopping, you can pick up the eggs while you're there. They have a fairly long shelf life anyway, if refrigerated. So, I, I think that that food insecurity issue is a little bit of a smoke and mirrors there. I would talk too about equity. The ordinance allows for no override of deed restrictions or homeowners association restrictions. So, if you live in a newer, fancier, more expensive house, chances are you have an HOA that's going to preempt you from having chickens in your yard. So, I think that that means that only lower income and neighborhoods that are older and may not have an HOA, like mine, would be more seriously affected by this. And, and those homes would also probably be more likely to have the smaller lots. And so, that's, that's an impact that will affect them a lot more. So, I'm asking you to advocate for property owners who have smaller lots. I'm asking you to deny this or recommend that this ordinance not be approved. Thank you so much for your time. And I, I did want to add, last time, I thanked you all for the time that you spend listening to people come and talk about pros and cons of different things. I also want to communicate to the people who came today, whether they're for or against the ordinance, how much I appreciate their engagement and their local government, because that's what really matters here. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming down again. I don't have anybody else sign up to speak. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this agenda item? Yes, ma'am. You've been here a long time. We can hear you, too.
Yes. My name is Pam Patty. I live at 2708 Woodbury Road in Edmund. I actually had the good fortune of being on this issue back in 2014, when it was first brought around. I think the ordinance was trying to talk about front yard gardening as well as chickens. And we were trying, as a dietitian, I guess I should also, you know, include that part of why I'm here. Food insecurity is a huge issue, and I understand her concerns. Think about what happened with COVID. If we have the luxury of going to a grocery store, that's fantastic. But what happened during COVID? We lost the food chain. We lost access. People that have backyard chickens, they don't have to worry about what COVID did as far as their ability to leave their home to go get food. They had it right there. You can make the arguments about how, how much things cost, but honestly, if you're going to go that route, how do you have all this equity with food that people can't afford anyway? So, if I'm going to put the money in, because, and again, we're not talking about 20 chickens. I believe the ordinance is five?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. So, if you're going to be able to have even opportunities for people to share the cost of doing this, if there is a, a couple of houses that want to do that, I don't think that's going to be restrictive to how people can really afford this food. Eggs are an incredible food source as far as the protein, the fat, all the other nutrition that goes with it, and it's extremely affordable. And when people can have access to that, not having to go travel for it, not having to have a food chain or food supply issue, that's something that we should support, not even just from a medical field, but because we have a community that says that's something that we can allow people. Again, it's not a mandate. You don't have to have chickens in your backyard. But why should we restrict people that want to have that when they have the ability to say, hey, this is an effort I want to put to? I mean, how, what's the ordinance for how many dogs you can have in your backyard?
Four.
Four? Yeah. So, I'm really sure that four dogs that are barking are much more, can invade my, my space of peace and quiet and all that when I have maybe six chickens up to. What if I have two chickens? So, it's not even a mandate that you have to have that many. So, I just feel like you guys are giving us the opportunity to have those options, and that's what Oklahoma City is all about, is to give the citizenry, the ability to make decisions because it's for their behalf. And when you guys give us the guidance for it, then we can work within that so all people can be considered for that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it very much. Anybody else want to be heard? Yes, ma'am? Welcome. Thanks for joining us for a long meeting.
Thank you. Aleah Woods, 1013 Northwest 32nd Street. I've never raised chickens. I don't intend to ever raise chickens, but I have, over the years, had neighbors who had chickens. And I just want to say, I wasn't opposed to it when they got them to begin with, but over time, they kind of grew on me, and I enjoyed having my neighbors have chickens. Their, the clucking was pleasant and kind of companionable when I was working in the yard next door, and I could see the pleasure that my neighbors had in them. And I got some free eggs. That was nice.
That's called a bribe.
Say what?
That's called a bribe.
Right. Yeah. And I, I just felt like it was a positive thing for our block, for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
... afternoon just to tell us that? Have you been here all day just to tell us that? I mean, that's amazing, isn't it? Talking about democracy in action.
Anybody else that wants to be heard? Okay. Well, let's chat. Who?
Yeah, I want to jump in with a couple of questions. And we get to a better point, you know, not necessarily to recommend that we just lower the one acre to smaller, because I have an issue with that. But I'm curious, the other cities, we said we're more restrictive than other cities. Do we happen to know if other cities restrict it? Do we happen to know if other cities restrict it? They just say half an acre or, because some of the issues with being close and the salmonella and all those different things, it's the small lots, that that's a bigger issue. So, do other cities, do we know allow it at half acre? Or just something less restrictive than us?
I don't know. Susan, do you have, do you have that data or happen to know?
I was trying to look at the graph that we gave out last time.
Right, there, yeah, there was, yep.
And so, Edmund does do it by like how, how big the lot is. And so, it's like if it's less than .33 acres, you're allowed four chickens.
Okay.
If it's a little bit bigger, you know, from 33 to .66 acres, you're allowed six. And then up to an acre, you're allowed eight.
That, that's helpful then. It seems like, yeah, other cities might restrict it just on lot size. But my problem with that is it starts to be, the more money you have to afford a bigger lot, the more flexibility you have, and I don't like that. I, you say, okay, let's do it at a half acre. Well, all these people in the .19 acre lots, like you can't have them because you can't, you don't have a big enough lot. So, I don't necessarily like just changing it to half an acre or something. What I'll say real quickly is that, you know, I, I get all this, that was a great summary. She gave them both right, in writing and verbally. But, you know, these small lots, the, the water runoff and salmonella and all that. Great points though, earlier, I've got a bird feeder and I've, I place it all the time. There's tons of bird poop under it, and I never even thought about, you know, water going off into the neighbors and, and how many people have, uh, bird feeders. Thank you, though. I don't wash my hands until today. Um, when I changed it, it didn't even cross my mind. Uh, it's kind of dumb, but I just don't. But there, there's so many back and forth, I start to lean towards a little bit more, you know what? Just give a little more freedom to people to do what they want to do, which caused me to think, um, does this go to the city council? I assume it does.
Yes.
This sure seems like more of a city council. I'm glad to vote. We can and we should. But my guy, all these points they just made feel a lot like elected officials who are responsible, their city, citizens need to decide this. So, we give them recommendations a lot. Let's do it. But, uh, I'm glad they're the elected officials, and thi, this really feels like something they need to decide. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna be in favor of it, but like barely. And I'm like, you know what? I don't spend all this time that my elected city councilman and the mayor do thinking about what's best for the citizens when it comes to chickens.
Yep. I, I agree with all that. I think for, at least for me, I'm 100% in agreement with what Commissioner Ford said about, you know, I don't, not big about telling people what they can do with their property. That's not apparent after four years. I don't know what is. But I'm not big about that. I think that we should let people do the things they need to do, want to do. It's kind of like, yeah, you want a chicken, have a chicken. But my big issue here, all this other stuff means nothing to me, quite candidly, very respectfully to Laura Johnson, except for this code violation issue. That's the thing that, that concerns me more than anything else is because there are going to be issues here, both ones that we've been told about, and then the joy of unintended consequences we can't possibly fathom that we're going to create by adopting this. Um, unlike some of the great people who've been here, I quite admittedly have not done the research that Ms. Braden has done to know what some of the, those unintended consequence or impacts of the people have done it, have done. But I do remember this. I remember a case recently where we had a group of people in here that were absolutely up in arms and the horror of the story they told about the lot where there's vehicles and piled and this and that. And they called the city, and the city couldn't get to a vantage point where it could view it. So, there was nothing really it could do, and they held these, and this went on for years. Okay. If, if we have enforcement challenges already, the last thing I want to do is add additional ordinances to, to the book that are extremely difficult to enforce. And I know that they've tried to do this to be crafty. I'm a lawyer. I can say this. They, they tried way too hard. And it's like, you're gonna tell me that someone's gonna enforce that they, so somebody's gonna, what are they gonna, laser measure 30 feet from an adjacent dwelling? They're gonna require coops to be located at least five feet from the side and 10 yards from the ground? Who gets that information?
How about that eight square feet of roaming area?
Yeah.
You know, we're.
This is, these are not enforceable things that we have the ability. And if we feel like these are important regulations, important restrictions on allowing this, but we don't have a mechanism to enforce them efficiently, it's very defeatist to try to adopt it. I, I just, that's what I'm really struggling with.
Can I, can I just say?
Yeah.
Um, I, there are a lot of chickens in Ward 2. Uh, somebody I was talking to about this recently was saying, well, I thought the city did allow chickens, you know? My neighbors have chickens, and my neighbors over here have chickens, you know, they're, I, I was here for the 2014 version, the front yard gardening and so on. And honestly, I thought we allowed chickens. I thought that the end result of that process was that we came up with a, a mechanism whereby you could go, I want to say, to the Board of Adjustment, or you could, you had to go to the Board of Adjustment if somebody complained. And it was like, you could do it if nobody complained, you're fine. If somebody complains, you go to the Board of Adjustment and you get it hashed out. Uh, I didn't realize that we didn't allow chickens. There are a lot of chickens in Ward 2. And in all the time that I have sat on this for you, I've never had a single phone call from any human being to complain about any of them.
The only thing that I would, the only thing, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I would add is, I think it is enforceable as far as, I mean, you can, if you don't, if you get the permission of the property owner, you can enforce it. If you don't get that, you can go to neighbors if you could see it in plain sight. Um, you also could get an administrative search warrant. So, those are the ways that we could enforce it. And if it is on a complaint basis, we will go out and we have, we measure that. They measure things like that all the time, as far as how far it is to an adjacent resident or, or those type of things. So, I mean, I think, that's what I would say as far as enforcement. There, there are ways to do it. Now, whether or not code enforcement has time and all that kind of stuff, that may be something different. But I think they are enforceable.
I personally would not want to live next to chickens. But I do understand that there are a lot of them that already exist. I'm gonna 100% support this because I think people should have the right to do it. I, I'm not convinced that this is any more obnoxious than someone's obnoxious dog that might be barking. I'm just not convinced of that. And thanks to the report that we received, um, which was excellent, um, I, I'm convinced that the only complaint is loose chickens and sometimes there's a rooster. And then they go out and enforce, can enforce at least that, it sounds like. So, I, I think it's just as risky to have a lot of dogs that, and so, for me, I, I say go with it. Let people have more rights with their own property.
Well, you know, I've, uh, I've had a neighbor two doors down and, and used to, still do live on what used to be Westbury Golf Course. And, uh, that guy's had chickens for, I guess, the better part of 40 years. I never knew what was behind the blue tarp that covered the fence next to the golf course until one day I hit my golf ball over there.
My god!
Through the fence to get my golf ball, and I see, and I see four or five little chickens over there. And I thought, oh. But he's had, you know, he had that. Well, they didn't get my ball. They weren't nesting on my ball. But you know, there's, there's a guy that's had chickens for 30 years, and I never did know it, and he still has them. But I guess they can be quiet. I guess he didn't have a rooster. I would have heard the rooster. But I grew up with chickens. My parents had brooder houses. So, we had lots of chickens in the city, in South Oklahoma City. So, I guess there are pros and cons. Uh, I've never smelled anything from the chickens. And I guess he used it, the droppings as fertilizer because he always had a beautiful garden. So, I guess there are pros and cons. Uh, and as a child, uh, we played around the chickens. I, we never got salmonella or any other disease. So, I guess there are extreme views both ways.
Yeah. My, my comment goes to the, goes to your unintended consequences. And we're going back to dogs. Sure, they might bark and all that. But there's a lot of dogs out there that are labs and terriers, and it is in their DNA to go after foul. And if they do that and it doesn't end well, I sent out Section 8 of Article 3 of the menacing and dangerous animals. That falls under any attack of a domestic animal, which includes chickens. They can be classified as a dangerous animal. They can be impounded, and they can be euthanized. Again, I'm for the, I'm, I'm for domestic chickens, but until this, you know, I don't, I don't know if we've looked at other ordinances, but until Article 3, you know, Section 8, this section is revised to provide some kind of exclusions for foul, I, I can't support it.
So, if my dog's dug under my back fence to get to my neighbor's chickens.
You'd be responsible if it ate your chicken.
And my neighbor stubbed in their head with a shovel, they'd be perfectly entitled to do that, as they say.
Yes, yep.
And that would be problematic.
Tell, tell, uh, tell lawsuits get filed, I guess.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
I, I, you know, the issue of the equities in this is, is, it is something I take seriously, and they do kind of weigh both ways. Um, like Ms. Johnson, I live in a neighborhood that's too old. I have an HOA. My restrictive covenants do prohibit you from keeping barnyard animals. And I'm sure chickens probably fall within that category. So, I'm not expecting any of my next neighbors to start raising chickens. But if they did, I'm not sure I would know the difference. Um, I also have relatives who actually live on acreages where they keep, you know, a few chickens. And they, you know, they are pets. They love them, you know? They're just, um, part of the deal. And I, I'm kind of like you. I'm sort of inclined to let people do what they want with their property if it's not causing other people problems. And I guess that's the rub. You know? Are they problematic or not in an urban setting?
Well, let's see where we are. Want to? Somebody make a motion. Either way, I'm indifferent. Let's just make one and see what happens.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, move that we recommend a city council approval of the ordinance.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on, sorry, let me go back to the beginning here. Uh, on item 39, which is, where's the ordinance number? Here it is. Uh, 59-8150.2.1. Please, it's been seconded by Commissioner Forge. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval.
So, if, if I may, Commissioner Claire makes a great point. So, whatever needs to be done to follow up on that, fix to people not, you know, neighbors not having a right to have their neighbor's dogs killed because of, uh, they ate their chicken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Negligence per se. Your chicken was out of the coop, sir. Anyway, sorry. It's been a long day. Forgive me.
Could be $3.99.
I figured I'd at least get a chuckle out of you, Susan. Come on. Uh, that's the last item on our individual items for consideration. The rest of our items have been continued or withdrawn. So, with that, we move to additional items, communication and report, planning commission committees. I don't believe we've had a meeting of the DRC there, so we can skip that. Is that correct, Commissioner Hinkle? Okay, uh, planning commission members, Commissioner Claire.
Nothing for me.
Okay, Commissioner Powers?
Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Commissioner Coffee?
Nothing.
Commissioner Privet?
Happy New Year, nothing.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Do think we should have a discussion about those issues that we discussed about some policy things. I do think we should have that conversation. I don't want to have it now because it's 6:06 PM, but I do think we should have it. And, and so, I'm just throwing that out there that perhaps, you know, we could.
Can I make a suggestion on that front?
Please.
So, in the past, there has been joint meetings, uh, that were held between, that were publicly noticed and all that between the city council and planning commission. Maybe it would be worthwhile of trying to, trying to organize such a meeting somehow, some way.
On a couple of topics, maybe.
Yep. And I think we could identify the, I don't mind getting the ball rolling on that. But, and maybe we just need to start thinking of some items, because we've been discuss, it's a, it's a handful of things.
There's a handful of things, and we could circulate something to make notes. The other thing we could do if we wanted to, I guess, is what we did before with the school deal is we could air kind of a resolution to send, just so there's something that's presented to city council from the planning commission on items of concern, so they at least see that we're expressing concern more generally. Uh, that would be an alternative to having a joint meeting. But normally, we do training, and that training typically occurs.
January, right?
Serago. It's coming up, is my point. And so, maybe it could be arranged as a part of that training.
That's a good idea.
That was my thought, so.
Really good idea.
Okay. That's all.
Quick question, I think I've asked before. Um, twice today, people came in where we told them to resubmit an application for a PUD. Do they have to file another application? Do they have to pay a fee again?
They, I think, no, they roll that fee over, don't they, JJ?
Then there's a difference.
They only pay the difference. Okay, good.
That's what I mean, that what they paid rolls, right?
Yeah, we, we'll apply the fee they've already paid to the new application. So, if the, if the SPOD is more, they'll just pay the difference.
Got it. Okay, I just want to make sure we, tell them people to do it, and they have to pay a second fee, and, okay, very good.
Yeah. Um, I will just say, since this is the last meeting year, it's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you all this year. I, I think we've had a, honestly, it's, it, there's been a lot of long meetings. It was another awkward year. 2020 was really weird. This year started out the same way, and we've been through a lot. I, you know, I, I mean, I know this is a little bit self-serving too, but I just want to tell you guys, we don't get any credit for the time you all sacrificed to sit here until 6 o'clock. And at the end of the year, I just would mark it and say, I appreciate all of you. It's, it's been a, it's been an interesting year. Hopefully, 2022 brings less agenda items. Um, and that would be my New Year's resolution. So, I appreciate all you guys a lot, and I respect all of you too.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, if there's no more discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn unless there's any citizens here like Jared that wants to be heard. All right.
So moved.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Hearing done, we're adjourned.